For bringing us into 2019, we thank you, God, for those that have authority over us, God, and we ask that you continue to give us wisdom in our walk this year, the President of the United States and the First Armored God in the name of Jesus, we ask that you continue to cover us, God, and we ask that we be on one accord, God, concerning the county, concerning our districts, God, and we ask that you be with us, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
[Inaudible]
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 Thank you, ma'am. Getting started tonight, the first thing on the agenda is a couple of bids. I'm gonna start with...
Mr. Chair, just a...I would like to respectfully request that I've given you the items that I'd like to pull from consent, but I'd also, before we suffer from mental fatigue, is it possible after we do bids and consent agenda that we can move directly to the code enforcement discussion, please?
I don't have a problem with anyone else.
Okay, great.
Well, that oughta last an hour or two, that's good.
Thank you, sir.
Talking as a bit.
Thank you, sir. I would make a motion to approve the bid 2018-14.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion?
I look forward to Calamity Corner being dealt with.
Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to pass.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Commissioner Turner, I'm sorry, got y'all mixed up.
You made him feel good there for a second, though.
Did I?
Yeah.
Kinda brought him there a little bit.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Is any further discussion on that? Seeing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm ready to see that one, Mr. Turner.
[Inaudible]
Okay, we got several things on the consent that has been pulled, starting with E1, 2, 3, and 4, G1, 2, and 3.
Yes, sir.
And we get a motion to pass the rest.
Second, approve the...
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion?
None.
Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's start with E1.
E1, I believe that may be your district, sir, but I'm not sure. It's 78th, 60th, 19th there.
That's me.
And then, and then all of the different addresses accordingly. I wanted to ask you, do you happen to know the current status of those properties? First off, and, and, and I'm in favor of what's been presented, I'm glad that we are going to sell those, so I make a motion to that effect now to approve item E1.
Second.
The what's been presented, those are gonna go for sale, correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Those are, we've been received, we've received an offer, we're ready to move them. I was just wanting to know, and I'm supporting that, I was just wanting to know, are those properties in disrepair right now? Are they head high? What are your thoughts on those properties?
Most of the properties I've visited out there are really not in disarray. Everything's, they're actually in the middle of nowhere by theirself, and for the most part, it looks really good.
Yes, sir. Well, I saw that, it looked to me as if there was some negotiation that occurred between staff and the, and the purchaser, or maybe the realtor and the purchaser and staff, but either way, I just wanted to say I appreciate y'all doing that, and obviously the market is doing what it's doing, but I think this is a good job, and I hope that we can continue to, to move any of those properties that are like that, because clearly if somebody's seeking us out to do that, you know, they're, they're probably not gonna just sit on it and do nothing with it, so.
Okay. Is any further discussion on that?
None.
We need a motion to close that one, then.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E2?
Mr. Chair, I would take E2 and 3 together, and I wanted to ask Ms. Byrd if you happened to have an opinion on the state of those properties, and did the county come into ownership of those via the escheatement process, or, or do we know, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was.
And so, and so, these are property properties that are just sitting out there vacant, not really doing anything as well.
Right.
And these are two more that are gonna go and get engaged in. No liens on any of these, Mark? I mean, we, obviously, there's nothing that's been asked of us.
Well, there were, there were liens that preceded our ownership, and then, when the property is cheats, all liens are wiped out by statute, and so, and the liens were, I know we had our own liens, but again, they get all wiped out...
Yes, sir.
...when the escheatement happens. There has been some cleanup that's occurred on both properties, and mowing, since we've owned, that's not lien work, that's just a property owner maintaining their property, which is what we've done.
Yes, sir.
So, we did have some out-of-pocket expenses.
Those are just essentially out-of-pocket expenses that we will not recoup the cost of.
Well, you won't, in the sense that...
Not allowing that property to be a blight to someone, to the neighbor or anything.
You can, right, and I think you, I don't know what staff's position is, but like, when we have a surplus, like on the, well, we're losing money in 816 Mississippi because we had a demolition there, and that exceeds the property value, coupled with the mowings, it exceeds the property value. 1008 Georgia Avenue did not have a demolition, it had a little bit of mowing and debris removal, but we're making a net profit on significant, oh, 6,000 or so on Georgia. I don't know how you feel about if we're, we should reimburse whatever account paid for the mowing or the demolition from the proceeds, but that's an internal transfer.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Was any of these lots paying taxes?
Not since we've owned them, and they didn't pay taxes, which is why it is cheated.
That's what I mean, sir. The main thing, we're getting them back on tax roll, too.
Yeah. Yeah, they're engaged in the process now, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve item E2 and 3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is any further discussion on these 2 and 3? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
What, what is our logic on, on purchasing 4700 Pioneer, 10th Street, and, and getting into that game?
Purchasing, we're selling. I mean, it says, "Seek bids to purchase," so we're seeking members of the public to purchase it from us.
So, we're gonna put it out as RFQ, or RFP?
An invitation to bid, probably.
Invitation to bid.
Prices.
Okay, okay, and we're gonna put it out there and let them, let them throw a number at it?
Yeah.
Well, you, you asked, this is not the one, I don't think, that I had a question on, for it to come back before us, and so, so my...
Well, when we have a...
So, my, so my recommendation to you all was, instead of politicizing this issue, what I recommend is that we, we give the administrator and her staff, if you will, the ability to handle this in a private transaction, and remove time constraints and get it done. I mean, that market, I would assume, is on fire, just like everything else right now.
Is there any reason for it to come back, though?
And, and why, why are we wanting to do that? Because, Mark, if, in the event, I'm just saying, I'm thinking we can get the most bang for our buck, if you will, if you all are able to sit there and negotiate with them, and I, and I know how y'all are gonna negotiate, I think you're gonna be pretty aggressive, but, you know, looking at, it's a double lot, appraisal values, and then the parcel and all that, there's gonna be some other actions that are occurring on that property, you know, we, we clearly have some costs that are out there as well associated with this one. I just want y'all to get it done. I don't think, this is something that should come back before us.
Okay, well, generally, for, for disposition of county property, the statute specifies that it has to be disposed of via bid, or for, if it's less than 15,000 in value, you can do an adjacent property owner notice and, and just do, seek bids in that situation, or, thirdly, you can adopt an ordinance that provides for alternative methods of disposition of county property, but that such an ordinance must include levels of, provide for competition and a provide for public notice so that it's...
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, then I'm just defeating the purpose of trying to let y'all do it, because now we gotta go through the whole ordinance process.
Well, we already have the ordinance, and so, the ordinance is earning our books, and our ordinance says we can dispose of our property through bids, through realtors, through individual negotiations with a single person, and we have done that before, when we had one person and only one person raising their hands, then we go off and talk to them and do a deal. Here, we had two immediately, like, the day after the crews left the site and hauled away all the junk, because it was so nasty.
And that's the status of the market right now.
People are watching it.
They are.
We want that now, and we had two, one who came into the office, the one who called us and said, "I want it now," and so, we got two, and so, the problem is individual negotiations. It's not, I mean, we could say, "Submit your highest and best offer to us," we could say that, it wouldn't be confidential if they saw it.
If they want.
But, but, and we do need our ordinance to, our ordinance specifies that it comes back to the board for approval. We can't have, like, the staff making deals.
And that's fine, and what I'm, what I'm proposing, Mr. Chair, is that they handle those details, I'm not, actually, I'm tweaking what I initially proposed. I'm saying, as what you've presented to us, I would just recommend that we do the invitation to bid, allow people to throw a number at it, you all open that up in a, in a, in the process that we have to follow conducting business, and then what you all say is, you know, the number, if y'all feel good about it, then put it back on the agenda for us to prove it and be done with it.
Just take, just take the highest number and put it on to consent.
That's what we're planning to do.
Put it on to consent agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's easy.
But y'all feel, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be interest, you know, we've had, we've had a ton of property, not a ton of property, we've had a fair number of properties.
Do you call the joint property owners, do you call them first?
Well, adjacent was one of the ones who stepped forward.
Immediately.
The other one, I don't know his affiliation, I didn't, I don't know that he's adjacent, I don't know where he's coming from.
I move to approve E4.
Second.
All righty. Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gonna bring us to G1, memorandum of agreement with the Florida Department of Emergency Management. We will fold up for discussion.
Yes, sir, that was me. I wanna know what size are those generators in the write-up?
5500, it said it, I thought. They were small, I thought.
In the, in the write-up, it looks as if we're, I don't wanna say we're necessarily taking initial responsibility.
You have to go up to the podium, please, sir.
But, um, y'all are talking about putting them to run intersections, obviously, they're not, a 5500 is not gonna be able to, to run a lift station or anything like that, so what are, what are we kinda thinking those are gonna do in the gray skies and that whole creation of what we have there?
Evening, Commissioner. This is Rick Lemkohl, the, the, the emergency manager.
How you doing?
Those are 5500 watt generators, they're just small generators for the, the intersections and, and other small items, if you will, on loan from DEM. They're not intended to use for the lift stations or anything large, but they are on loan for us if we go into agreement and just do the maintenance, the simple maintenance. We can use it however we will in the, in the blue skies, and then typically, we should be able to keep them in the gray skies, but if the state needs to borrow them back and, like, redeploy that resource, that's what they're gonna want us to do, because they don't wanna sit on all these resources, they just want them available.
Was there something, they came to you and said, "Hey, we're gonna do this," or did you have to apply and seek into this?
They, they offered this up to every county, and so, each county EM asked for a certain number.
Okay.
So, I was thinking we were small, we...
Right.
10 is probably enough.
So, it wasn't a choice of what you got, it was a choice of the number?
The choice of the number, I could've asked for 20, but...
Yeah, yeah, no, good.
Next county might want some more.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Mr. Chair, what, how does the responsibility rely, like, hey, if one comes up missing or one gets destroyed because somebody doesn't check the oil on it, how, how does that all play out, Mr. Lemkohl?
I have no idea how, how we're responsible for it, but we are responsible for it in the MOU.
Yes, sir.
We'd probably just pay it back if it's, if, and then annually, we're supposed to put, submit our maintenance and what we've been doing with it, and then making sure that it's inventoried annually. If we're not living up to that agreement with the maintenance and then taking caring, care of this so that it can be redeployed somewhere else, they'll take it back from us.
And I'm sure you're aware, probably better than anyone in the county, but maybe not, I know Commissioner Wills knows, and, you know, but as it relates to some of our emergency operations centers, you know, we had some generator issues, and so, when I see us getting 10 on a borrowed status, I was just wanting to know, you know, what does that maintenance plan look like, you know, what kind of a program do you have already created, you know, are these, are these uniforms, clearly, they're all Generax, you know, they're all 5.5s, but, you know, just making sure that we're, we're mining our Ps and Qs on that, so that in the event the state does call because Hurricane, whatever, hits up in the Panhandle and they want those 10 back, you know, how, how are we gonna be on the hook for that, you know, so?
I can manage that from my office, with me and my staff.
You can manage the maintenance process?
The maintenance of those 10 generators, they're, they're small engines.
Yes, sir, but the, but the maintenance, but the saying you can maintenance it, and then actually maintenancing it, and having the, the protocol in place that says, you know, from a policy perspective, I'm just, anytime I see us taking ownership of something from a borrowed perspective, my mind just immediately goes back to the bureaucratic process of, it's other people's money, it's really not mine, so unless you're a champion in life, you're really not gonna monitor it as if it was yours, living in your generator that was gonna run your home. Unfortunately, that's what happens sometimes. That's why, you know, in the world that I live in, we replace a lot of generators, because problems happen to them throughout the entire state. That's why, you know, the county's looking at doing some of the things that we're looking at with our, our facilities, you know. We had a number of generators, when we gave a list, it was impartial, it could be, and we didn't even know where all of them were, or, excuse me, we didn't know what all of them were exactly, and we danger, didn't know the status of them. So, just, you know, just wanting to be mindful of this process and, and knowing that we do have a, a protocol in place, if you will.
I intend to have a program with that. It's, it's small enough that I can inventory all of my items inside of my department and maintain that, and then deploy it out to Public Works or whomever's gonna want to borrow it during that gray sky or the public affairs or public events, whatever we do with it.
Wonderful.
Then inventory control is easy.
Well, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the item with the request that whenever you do and/or if you have it already, I'd love to see those protocols or that procedure. I love gleaning stuff like that and possibly implementing stuff into my own day-to-day activities, so, thank you, boss.
Thank you, sir.
Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G2?
G2 has been pulled for presentation at a future meeting.
That's deleted, I'm sorry, I wrote that down there and didn't read it. Thank you, Mr. Lemkohl. G3, the upgrade and support of the variant E91 Run Recorder System.
Right, the, this is just a clarification, that the contract that was in the packet was an earlier draft, there's been modifications made to, to its...
To approve?
Subject to the review of County Attorney.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's gonna bring us to awards and appearances.
I thank you.
You go to the code enforcement.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, we were not pulling 4?
I was trying to, trying to wait on that.
No.
Well, you should've gotten an email on 4.
Okay, all right.
So, we are, we're moving to the code enforcement.
All right.
Kelly Margaret, you got an hour and a half.
I have a doctor's appointment in about 15 minutes, so I have to leave.
I'm driving you.
Drive you.
I'll have you to maintenance.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. This is, was, this item was continued from the December 11th board meeting. It gave us the opportunity to conduct a meeting with Commissioner Turner to review the information that we provided. We revised the staff report somewhat, but basically laying out from an informational perspective of what the opportunities are for the special magistrate and how the county court judge and special assessment processes work. We, again, talked about the unsafe structures and blighted properties, the recommendations that we had regarding there being opportunities to revise the, the current timeframe and shortening it for that process, and also looking at additional requirements in the code for property maintenance. We also talked about foreclosures, and we also talked about the special assessment lien process versus the uniform method of collection, and provided you backup documents to discuss the special magistrate compared, in comparison to the other, other counties that we chose as examples, being Charlotte and DeSoto, and what was the other one?
Charlotte County.
Thank you.
Charlotte County.
Y'all heard this so much and read it so much, sorry. But anyway, I, at this point, I'm going to open it for discussion, and if you have any questions of staff, I'm, I will be here for those questions.
So, on, on number one, special magistrate and county judge, I've read it over and thought about it, and I would like to stay with a county judge, and then if that didn't work out, can we always come back and change it?
And go to a special magistrate? Absolutely.
Because we got a brand-new judge in town, and I think we need to give him a shot first, because each one of them have a different way to think, and I'd like to give him a shot at it.
Well, we always have the option of changing our, our process.
Mr. Chair, I'm 180 degrees the other way. I think that in the 10 years that I've been a commissioner, we've, we've allowed the county judge to handle it, we've had multiple county judges that have handled it, and they're not. And, and to the judge's defense, and, and Ms. Ambly, we are just now starting the process, or maybe for the last six months, of sending county staff to go and speak on behalf of the properties that, that we're essentially engaging in from a good...
No, they, I'm sorry.
We sat at a board meeting one time, and we're just now starting to do that, but we've always been done, doing that.
It's always been done like that, that, that the code enforcement officers present the cases, their cases specifically.
No one, no one remembers the statement of, "This is the, the first time that staff has been in there to work with the judges or to be on behalf of the county representing this?" Nobody remembers that?
No, I, I...
Okay.
From what I understand, they've always had staff present during...
They dreamed it, then. I don't think so, but I will go back and scour the videos, because I know it was said, but neither here nor there.
They could've been present and just been saying it.
Yeah. Well, you know, if you look at the examples that were given, everybody has a special magistrate.
Not everybody.
Well, okay, let me give you, the examples that are given, actually, Charlotte County has three, and DeSoto and Okeechobee both have one, so I'm just utilizing the examples that we have. I know that Glaze County has, I can't speak for their entire board, but I know that at least a majority of their commission is, shared interest with me of talking about the ability to have a special magistrate that would work maybe in both of our counties to help reduce cost, or the frequency of them coming over and, and being able to clump more cases together, and maybe something that we get a better rate if we were to issue that request for proposals or whatever it may be. I think that the city of Closton, no, excuse me, the city of Closton already has a special magistrate process, and I'd also like to add that if you think about the fact that the county judge currently hears the entire docket from, you know, A to Z, traffic tickets, criminal cases, the clerk can speak more, or perhaps, Ms. Byrd, no, you can speak more specific to that issue, but in my opinion, the county judge has some significant things along with code enforcement that they have to deal with, and I think that this doesn't really rise to any of the front burners, in my, in my professional opinion. I think that this is a afterthought many times, and that's why you don't see any of the motivation, and so, I would just urge us to engage this process. We haven't ever done it, I think the time is now, so...
What, do you have a personal opinion about it, or...
No, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a professional opinion about it?
Your silence is deafening.
Yeah, I mean, before you put her on the spot, before you do put her on the spot, let me, let me interject. I can say that I originally was the one that brought this up. I was sitting at the meeting with the other cities and counties and actually brought this up to the county. The only thing I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, there's quite a few things that they do not do. They do not, they do not have a budget set aside for the cleaning or the demolition. I don't agree with that. We have so much blight that if we did not have that budget, we couldn't even maintain what we do have.
Commissioner Wills, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you, say, educate me on what you're saying now. You're saying that we currently, or you said they, I'm asking?
We currently have money budgeted for those processes.
Yes, sir.
Other counties do not.
Yes, sir.
That means they do not get done.
Okay.
That's, it stays in disarray until the point that someone purchases it, or the county, once again, you end up eating it.
Yes, sir.
We have a budget set aside for demolition as, as well as unsafe structures and difference as far as demolition and cleaning, mowing, we have budgets for that. I don't wanna see that budget go away. I do, I do agree with Mr. Harris, I'd really like to see how the new judge is gonna act, and I understand your concern, I really do, and I have a, I have a ton of that on my side of the county as well. He's really stepped up in the jail, we don't have the overcrowding following that we've been having. There's been a big difference there, he's, he's made a difference, so I kinda, I, I agree with Mr. Harris, let's see what he's gonna do, because we can always come back and, and enact this and move forward with it, but that's kinda where I'm at with it right now.
Let me, let me kinda give you the, another counterpoint to what you were saying with regards to the demolition, cleaning, and mowing.
Yes.
I don't think that we should be doing that. Currently, today, we have over $130,000 in liens that are pushed against separate properties, and, and that's going back time certain. There's actually a greater number that I, I would venture to say, if you really drilled in on whether we're gonna be able to recoup those costs, those hard costs that we've already expended, we're not gonna see that. We're, we're not gonna realize those costs. Whereas, if we change up the process of what we've always done, if we, if we, if we engage a special magistrate, if we engage code enforcement issuing citations and being proactive instead of reactive, I mean, we're not waiting months and months and months to actually go out and demo a property, we're actually putting, we're putting a, a bill that is accruing numbers against said property, and now that property goes into the special magistrate process, the special magistrate now, that's their sole focus when they come to Hendrick County. Their only focus is gonna be dealing with the docket of, of properties that are, that are blighting our community, and, and they're gonna, they're gonna engage that process. I don't think that we're gonna, we're gonna have those expenditures associated with demolition, cleaning, mowing, and, and those costs that we have. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we wipe those funds clean and push it all to the special magistrate, but I'm saying that, you know, I feel very confident, you know, if, if we go the route that two of you have suggested thus far of waiting 60 or 30 days, I don't know what your timeframe is, is it six months that goes away, like, in the blink of an eye, where, where are we gonna go with that? And, and then, when, when is enough enough? I mean, to me, we've all sat up here and said, "We wanna engage the code enforcement process, we wanna make it a top priority." I think now, we, we have a couple different scenarios that have been put in front of us. DeSoto County meets our, our demographics to the nth degree, Okeechobee County, very similar, except, in my opinion, they have, they have, they're, they're outrunning us in the race today. Charlotte County's a little bit of a different animal, but I think if you look at others, you know, and like I said, in, in my conversations with Glaze County, they're very frustrated with this process. I don't think that that's a frustration, because Judge Lundey isn't doing his job, per se. I think it's a frustration that Judge Lundey is overwhelmed, and I think that our judges are overwhelmed with other items as well, and I think that hiring a special magistrate says to everyone, "We're, we're putting an emphasis on this process."
Yeah, and to go along with what you're saying, when you look at the days and numbers, times, time spans now are almost identical. In fact, some of our times are shorter than a special magistrate, so when you look at the, the time period, you're saying, you know, 60, 45 to 120 days, that's the same timeframe the magistrate's dealing with as well. And I understand he's coming in for one thing, and trust me, I, I understand the, the blight, I, I can't stand it. There's part of my district over there that's ignored, it's left out there by itself, and it, it looks terrible. I can't stand it, but I can't do anything about it. Special magistrate, no matter what, I'm dealing with. So, I, I get it, I want it to look better, I want my town to be inviting, I want people to, when they come there, I want them to see what, what's nice, it's friendly, it's, it's what, what's nice, it's friendly, it's, it's open, it's inviting. And they're not seeing that, I get it. But once again, we're spending money that I think would be better spent after the fact. If this judge doesn't do it.
We'll, we'll recoup the costs on the special magistrate process. That's a hundred percent recoup for.
Yeah, but you, you don't know if you will or not.
No, no, it, it's, it's all to go against the property. It, it, Mark, am I incorrect on that?
Can become part of, part of the lien that's imposed on the property.
No, we do not have that, we don't have that ability now that we could
Well, for the
Change and do that ourselves or what?
For the current way we deal with mowing and building demolitions,
Mm-hmm.
We are entitled to lien the property for that cost.
So we get that money back.
But it's the contractor cost. There is not a significant process cost. The statute doesn't allow for recovery of any process costs for the special assessment method. It only requires, allows recovery of the remediation cost.
Actual cost.
So we get, we can get that back. It takes a foreclosure lawsuit or, or a property sale or refinancing for them to pay voluntarily.
It'll be no different than a special magistrate.
Special magistrate.
You can sit there all day long and say it, but.
The special magistrate, we can recover the, um, the corrective costs, and the statute does say we can recover process costs for special magistrate. So that can become part of the lien, added to the lien amount. Again, it's a lien.
The only thing we're doing is recouping his cost.
And, and the correction, and the correction, and the fine. So you can get a fairly significant lien amount, but like with any lien, it's a matter, does the property owner have the capacity to pay? If they don't, then you're left with, uh, getting repayment, um, at a property sale, at a refinancing or by foreclosure.
And then if it runs the cost up more than the value of the property, it just sets there.
That, that's not necessarily true.
Well, it sets, you, you can choose to foreclose, but in choosing to foreclose, I think you ought to consider where you're gonna be at the end of the day if you prevail and whether the amount of money you're gonna go out of pocket, you already went out of pocket some amount to fix it.
Yeah.
You, um, are going to have to pay the delinquent taxes if you foreclose. You, you, you buy the tax, if there is a delinquent tax accumulation.
We feel that on a lot of these properties, there would be a high probability that there will be a delinquent tax bill.
So you're gonna buy that, and then you've got your process cost of foreclosure. And so you add all that together and consider whether that grand total is more or less than the value of the property. And in many cases, in a lot of cases, it's not, because we're talking about a property that, if it had a home, it got, if we're in a demolition scenario, it got demolished. So it's, it's a vacant piece of land. And in Port LaBelle, that's three thousand dollars, and Montura, it's seven or eight thousand, you know.
It got demolished because the county took action to demolish it. What I'm talking about is a wholesale exchange where we don't do that anymore. The, the, the property will sit vacant, the lien, the lien slash citation process will be engaged. And do, do you, do you agree that I, that was kinda what I proposed, that we lay out of, of a wholesale exchange of that so that it's more proactive without a hard cost? So there's not a bill out there that's well into six figures that, once again, it's other people's money syndrome. You know, with all due respect to staff, they're not worried about getting that payment. They're just creating, creating the bill and, and creating the contractor to go out there and do the work, but we're not getting a recoup on that finance.
Well, it goes back to the property we talked about a while ago. What was, what was the comment? As soon as it was cleaned up, they said, I wanna buy it. So did we not, took the money we had out?
No, 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 because so many times they come before us and ask for our forgiveness, and we give them, number one. Number two.
So, but what we just did on this property, until it was cleaned up, it was still sitting there. As soon as it was cleaned up.
We set in place in April for them, we, we gave them instructions on to make some changes. They making the changes and the property's being cleaned. Am I right? The property that sold in Harlem was grass, it was our property, but they went back and went behind themselves and they sold, so.
We had hard costs that were associated with that.
We're taking, we're not giving them the opportunity to finish what we asked them to do in the first place. So now we jumping over what we already asked them to do, and we moving to something else. I think we need to give them the opportunity to finish what we started and then, you know, bring this back. But we're not giving them, it started in April, am I right?
Correct. April forty-seven.
It was in April, we, we gave you instructions in April and they're doing it. And they are cleaning property and it is selling. So we need to give them a chance to proceed in what they, what we asked them to do in the first place before we move any further.
Yeah, and again, I'm not against a magistrate. I'm the one that brought it up. So I'm, I'm for it.
I'm not against it.
I just wanna see.
We'll see what happens.
I wanna see what happens with it. Well, actually, we have staff. We had a staff change. So we have things that are moving forward. Now we have a new judge. And I would just like to see, before we put cost out, I'd like to see, okay, is it gonna work?
You do realize we're putting cost out every day now?
I, I know that, but it's not what we're gonna be putting out extra as compared to that now.
We're gonna be putting cost out that is going to speed up the process and is actually gonna give teeth.
Still the same amount of days.
No, it's not. It's, 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 it's actually even, I would say it's even technically a longer time span, but with not hard costs associated from a business perspective. If you were running the county like a business, there's not a cost associated with the county sending said contractor out there to go out and demolition the home. There is a process that would be changed, and, and, and it's not necessarily given in this, uh, in this staff report either.
Let me ask, who cleans the property if we take this route? Are you still responsible code enforcement?
If we go through, but go to a special magistrate, uh, we would not be responsible for either mowing or the demolition or any kind of cleanup. It would all, uh, you know, the, the, the grass would go, grow, the, the unsafe structure would sit there until either the property owner was, you know, uh, inspired to do something about it, uh, based on the special magistrate's findings, um, or it would just continue to sit there until there's a, the next step.
Well, the, if it's a threat to, the statute allows if there's a public health, a threat to the public health, safety or welfare, we can ask the special magistrate for permission to go forth and clean, address the situation, come back to him with the costs, and then he would add that to the lien amount if it's a threat to public health, safety and welfare. We can make that case for a dilapidated structure pretty easily. For tall grass, I don't know.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
But, but for a structure that is, that is housing a, you know, a person that we don't necessarily want to be in a single family home or whatever that may be, which we have, people that are shacking up in these places and it's drawing a bad amount of attention or, you know, we have people that are, that are basically, you know, they're, it, it runs its gamut. I mean, I think all of this, I keep going back to, when you allow these blights to occur, like what's happening on Midstate Loop, it's been there for over ten years now, or what's happened on Hooker's Point Road, which is a main thoroughfare. And one of my classmates from high school, thank God I went to school with her, and she didn't just pound me over the head every time she saw me, but that home was there for over thirty plus years in that state, you know. Thank God, you know, we, we know all the owners personally, talked to them directly and said, hey, can you clean this up? But it had no, it had no code enforcement process against it whatsoever. And what I'm saying is, is that I think that we, we should have a wholesale exchange. You all feel, you all feel, I'm, I'm getting the non, I'm getting the direct verbal communication from at least three of you, I don't know where Commissioner Swindle is, that we're moving the needle now, that we're, we're changing the, the conversation as it relates to code enforcement. I don't necessarily disagree with that. What I would say to you all though, is that we are, we are running up a hard cost associated with that, just to misemblige this point. We don't need to be doing that. That does not need to be, we do not be, need to be in the lawn mowing business or the house tearing down business. In my opinion, we should be in the letter writing campaign business, please said absentee owner, person that is not doing what you, you know, should be doing that society views as normal, please engage your property. If you do not, we're gonna start the proceedings to either, A, get you to engage that via the special magistrate process, and then if that process still falls on deaf ears, then we're gonna start with the foreclosure process. And, and there's an example that staff found that they rarely pursued in three comparisons, uh, due to the cost and unlikely financial benefit based on existing back taxes and mortgages. What I would say to you is, there are neighborhoods in our county that have completely gone to, to the dogs, you know. There are neighborhoods that it will, it will be generations to try to get a renaissance to occur in those if it would ever occur. And in my opinion, that is directly correlated back to code enforcement, you know, not staying up on top of that and, and the county not having the teeth or the tools to engage this process to say to you, hey, you're coming up from Miami Dade, you're coming up from, uh, Missouri, you're, you're coming down, I mean, from Missouri, whatever it may be. Um, this doesn't, this doesn't run as socioeconomic status, this doesn't run a color barrier or nothing. It is us trying to engage in making sure that our neighborhoods hold their values and/or inflate in those costs. You know, the cost, the tax base grows. And we're not, we're not seeing that now. We're, we're, we're seeing, you know, structures that have been on the books for years that are not on the tax, taxing rolls, they've steved it back to the county, they're coming for it. All that gets wiped off anyway. You know, I mean, there's, there's multiple variables to be considered here. Um, and, and I just think that, I think that we need to be pressing the gas as hard as we can on the special magistrate process, um, to, to move forward with this process and, and engage a new, a new method of thinking. Started off, that's my thoughts.
Uh, how, how many, uh, times you have to tick it before it goes for the judge? Is it two or two?
Just once.
Say only one time.
Yep.
Then it can go to the judge.
Yeah, once they get issued a citation, we are, that's it, thirty days. They've already gotten their thirty days. So we set it up for the next four years.
Okay, and then, uh, the thirty-first of this month, we have how many going to the judge?
Thirty-five cases.
Thirty-five cases.
Oh, no, do you wanna come up here?
Thirty-five cases going, uh, June, uh, January thirty-first.
Yeah, thirty-five cases in twenty-two properties.
So that'd be a real good test.
Correct.
So, and I couldn't agree more, um, with the whole conversation. And, you know, we've all been living it, and Commissioner Turner's been beating us over the head with it, and, and it took me a, too long to open my eyes and see that he's exactly right. We feel the long-reaching far tentacles from this in every aspect of our community. What I, kudos to the, to the staff for what they have done and bringing it to where you have. I think that everything from the boots on the ground has gotten better and they're doing a better job. And even in, even in the, the final piece of the write-up, you say that, you, you know, y'all have made some measures to shorten timeframes, to be a little more aggressive. That's where I think that we could see some unbelievably huge wins, no matter which direction we wind up taking here. I would love to see more aggression in how they're ticketed and when they're ticketed and how we make that decision on who gets ticketed and not wait too long. I wanna see some robust language that makes sure that we have the teeth to follow up and, and ticket, go to, go to the judge or whatever happens to happen. Uh, Commissioner, I think now, even if we put it out for bid, you know, even if we decided tonight to go forward with it, which I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to, uh, I don't believe that we would get there before this judge's first ruling of cases, one way or the other.
No, absolutely.
So, um.
There's no way we could spin on that dime.
Not, not tonight. I don't think so. And, and so, uh, the, the process is there. The folks have already gotten this first ball rolling. I would love to see some feedback. I would love to kinda get our staff's, you know, feedback from how that judge handled it. And if he used what we hope to be an iron fist and to send a message and, and invigorate our crew to continue doing that, I, I think I would like to see the results of that over a period of time. If that's not the case, I'm ready to move forward and let's get a magistrate that's coming in here with guns ablazing to, to make sure this happens. Um, it, it's going on for too long and it's, it's affecting too much, everything from land values to schools, you name it. And so I, I, I think that, I believe y'all hear that clearly from the entire dice. I don't think there's anyone that doesn't agree with what needs to happen. The mechanism when we get there, I don't think there's anything short of enough hard work on the staff's part of boots on the ground, being aggressive, pushing forward, not driving by a home that y'all see that needs it, and making sure that that process happens. I think it's gonna be where the huge wins are gonna be, be gained. And we're gonna have to gauge ourselves over the next, after January thirty-first on what direction we take. I'll back you up a hundred percent if we don't get the results we want.
And also, Commissioner Turner, what you said about Glaze County, it'd be very, very interesting to see if we can, you know, formalize with them on this.
If we do, fine. If we don't, fine.
Right.
You know, we don't have to have them to do what we have to do, but if we can, that's great.
So, I mean, we can share the cost, that's a good thing.
Right. And be thinking, let's just start thinking outside the box, please, about if we need to move forward the magistrate, how are we gonna fund that? Because there's gonna have to be some upfront, upfront funding, you know. And so let's, let's start thinking about how that's gonna happen. Let's start moving down that road and if.
And also, just going back to what you said earlier, if a property has four violations, they come in compliance with two of the violations, doesn't matter, their thirty days are up. So even if they have four violations and two are in compliance, the other two aren't, they still go to court.
Yeah.
We're not being as lenient in the, like we were in the past, regardless. And, and unless it's a permit issue or a planning issue, where they send us something from an engineer or they have a permit application in, it still goes forward.
Yeah.
We're, we're just pushing forward.
You do the first ticket on them. Okay, how many days is it before it can go before the judge?
Depending on the court, on the clerk requests that they have thirty days so they can subpoena, subpoena them. So we're trying to do it on a monthly basis. Like right now, even though we're going to court on the thirty-first, we've already started the citation process for the February one.
So when?
So we're in January, we're already setting up for February.
How many days do they have to respond to you? Two weeks or a month?
Excuse me?
To respond to you when you give them the violation. Do they have two weeks or thirty days?
They have thirty days.
Is that adjustable at all? Is that, is, because some of those are code, that some of those state statutes, remember from the previous presentations that we received.
If it's a general violation, it's thirty days.
And that's where I would love to see the aggressive, robust language to shorten it to them, the, the minimum time possible that we can throw on them on every one.
Yeah.
Give them the minimum time possible, not the maximum or not the average.
No, it's on our notices. All of our notices says they have only thirty days.
But is that the official lowest number we can give?
Oh.
It can be lower.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the statute, first of all, there's, there's a notice of violation, then there's a citation, to be clear. So there's a notice of violation that goes out that, that provides an opportunity to fix it. There's no court invoked at that point.
Okay, how long does?
Right.
Does it have to respond to that?
Right. Our practice has been thirty days.
Correct.
The statute says such time period.
Reasonable.
Yeah, it says, shall establish a reasonable time period within which the person must correct the violation. Such time period shall be no more than thirty days. So we could have established a shorter time free frame as long as it's reasonable for the circumstance. And so there could be some shortening of the notice of violation time as long as it's a reasonable time still. And I guess that's in a very, depending on the nature of what our, what we're asking them to fix. And so I think just to be conservative or whatever, more, uh, uh, to be more reasonable, we give them thirty days. And then if they don't meet that, then they get the citation, and then that triggers the court process.
Okay, how long does it take after the thirty days? Can you go on the thirty-first day?
Thirty days.
Yeah, another thirty days.
It's another thirty days, so sixty days.
Sixty days.
So what if you shorten that, uh?
You can. We're not going to, because reasonable is a term that our staff is not going to squeeze faster than thirty days.
You can't do fifteen days?
You can call it twenty-one, you call it fifteen, I mean.
We can change it.
I think that, I think that we, we all, I think that we're kinda clouding the issue a little bit here. And it still goes back to, we're talking about the worst blights in the entire county. How are we gonna deal with those? How are we gonna address those? We had a report that gave us, you know, there were X number of properties that had four or more violations. We were given a report that said, you know, we opened up a thousand cases, rough numbers here. We opened up nine hundred and sixty-one cases and we brought in nine hundred and eighty-three to compliant. You know, just a layperson looking at it says, man, code enforcement's opened a lot of violations and closing a lot of, you know, issues. That's a wonderful job. And, and, you know, I, I just stand by my statement of, there are, blight is growing in Hendrick County. It's not shrinking, it's growing. And I think that, and I think that it starts with us. The buck stops here with regards to us, us dealing with this issue. Let me ask Ms. Butler, unless, Ms. Verano, you can answer this question. Our judges that hear this issue associated with, with the county code process, how many days a month do they deal with this? The, the, is it just code enforcement? What, what do they deal with? How many days a month?
Barbara Butler, Kirk, the county judge sits one day a month for traffic and slash code violations.
So that's once a month.
Once a month. That's it.
Well, that's good.
That's good? You think that's, you think that's an emphasis, twelve times a year is an emphasis on something?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is that adjustable at all?
That should be.
Pardon me?
They set that, can we ask?
He doesn't have time to adjust his schedule.
Can't do it two weeks? We can't do every other week or something?
It's strictly up to the judge and his, and his docket's full.
And, and, and the new judge, he's, he's got one day a month scheduled thus far as well?
Yes.
And the previous month in December, the previous judge, how many cases did he hear that month? Fourteen?
I don't know.
Sixteen, does anybody recall?
I believe it was fourteen.
And, and it was one day. So now we've, we've doubled that load.
November, yeah.
It was not December. I don't think there anything occurred in December.
Nothing was heard in December.
Because it was a new judge, December third.
Okay, okay.
Well, again, with a special magistrate, that statute's gonna carry the same? With reasonable amount of time, we're gonna have to give them that same amount of time. Is that correct?
Um, let me just confirm that. I imagine it does.
And not have a hard cost associated.
But, well, some of these, we don't have hard costs. Some of them are in the same boat. We haven't done nothing to it.
Mm-hmm.
All we're doing is trying to recoup the money that they are in violation of the, whatever the code was. That was an infraction, we're trying to recoup that. We have not mowed that, we have not demolished anything. So in that, in that instance, does that statute read the same for a magistrate?
Similar.
A special magistrate.
A special magistrate, it says, if a violation of the codes is found, the code inspector shall notify the violator and give him or her a reasonable time to correct the violation.
Right.
Next sentence, should the violation continue beyond the time specified, et cetera. So it doesn't give the thirty-day cap. For, for our county court cases, it gives a thirty-day cap. It's a reasonable time not to exceed thirty. Here, it's just a reasonable time.
So in other words, the special magistrate could come in and give them forty-five days, sixty days, because it does not cap it.
Well, no, but this is, the, the special.
Running into with the judge, he was given too much time.
Fair statement.
This is the code inspector. So this is us giving the initial notice. We establish the time. Now, he may just slap our hands and tell us, you didn't give them a reasonable time when we give them five days to.
Well, that's what we ran into with the judge originally. That's, that's kinda why this whole thing started when I started the conversation to the special magistrate. And again, I'm not against it. I just like to see, you know, what's, what's gonna happen now.
I'm asking, I'm asking. I'm not, uh, in this, in this discussion. Does the special Does the special magistrate work for us, Mark, and we're able to decree, we want it, you know, we want it brought into that, that most reasonable and allowable timeframe known to man? So that, so to his point, it, it can't be, uh, you can deal with it at your leisure.
Well.
It's an overgeneralization, but.
No, I get it, yeah.
He's functioning in a quasi judicial capacity, I mean, we're paying his, we're paying his.
But he's not our.
Check, but if, he, he's not our, he's not our attorney.
So if he doesn't do a good job, we fire him X number of days afterwards.
If we feel like he's being way too lenient, we would just, but I don't think we can dictate to him to say, you're, you're being too lenient and, you know, you have to change. We could say, we're terminating this contract and we're going on to somebody else.
And we're in that right now, if the county judge doesn't perform to where we want to be, then we go to a special magistrate. So we're, we're in the same scenario now.
Okay.
I think the biggest benefit I see also in, in carrying on the further, the previous conversation is, then we also have the ability to sit if it was a magistrate twice a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a time point.
And so, uh, I think that's, that's huge.
Yeah, because.
So then we can turn, we can take the leash off. And y'all can, y'all can make it happen.
We can say, stack this up, deal, you know, we, we want to see an emphasis placed on this in the first six months of the, of the calendar or the final six months of the calendar. We want to see, you know, as many of these issues pushed across the table as possible, so, you know. And, and then, and then, not, not to cut any of this conversation, because I know y'all are dying to talk about this all night. But, um, I also, I despise the, the, um, the uniform method of collection. Um, I don't, I don't understand, that's not chapter one fifty two, right?
No, that's one ninety seven.
Yep, why are we, why are we not wanting to engage that process?
I, I'm saying, suggesting we ought to.
Okay.
The uniform method, you said you despised it, though.
You, no, no, so, so you're saying uniform method is chapter one ninety seven?
Right.
I want to make everything so that it's chapter one fifty two.
One sixty two.
One six, excuse me, one sixty two. And that we're, and that we're, we're starting to put those angles into action as it relates to the code enforcement process, the lien process, the foreclosure process, and, and a non-five year statute of limitations.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know if it starts out as a quarterly report or a bi-monthly report, I don't know when. But I'm dying to see how many liens are out there. And we didn't have any liens to approve in this, in this board meeting, by the way.
Once a month, I was gonna have it in the LaBelle one.
Got you, um, uh, well, you know, we, we could speed that up as well, but another discussion, but, uh, um, I'm, I'm wanting us to look at that and start asking that, you know, guys, that's a, that's a hard cost that's out there that, that we're making the taxpayers front on behalf of us policing our neighborhoods. And in my opinion, it's, it's not the way that everybody does it, and I don't think it's the way that we should be doing it. Because how many of us have referred to ourselves as a poor rural county? I know I have, and yet we're gonna go out in front of those costs whenever there's a different process that we could engage. And I'm, and, and I'm not saying that it has to be this one, and I'm not harping on that, I'm just saying, there's a different process that we can engage that runs that tab up and, and then allows for action to occur on the backend, and it's just paper writing, that's all it is.
Is, is there a hybrid model, or could, could it be a hybrid model?
Well.
Because I don't think switching to a magistrate is gonna make it go away, or it's gonna happen fast, or it's gonna be a silver bullet. Can we do a hybrid where we have a magistrate and we still work with some of the blighted ones and overgrown ones, we went ahead and took care of it so that we could sell it?
Yeah, well, we're kind of doing hybrid right now, we're doing, only the general cases go, go to the county judge. The unoccupied properties with tall grass and the unoccupied properties with dilapidated structures go not to the county judge. They go through a notice process and then we clean it up and lien per ordinance, that's what we do now for those. And so, uh.
So that wouldn't change.
Well, if you, if you don't want it to, it won't change. You know, when you say you wanted to try the county judge process and see how it goes, we would, just to be clear, if we continued status quo, that would be what I just said. Unoccupied mowing and occupied dilapidated structures would not go to him because they haven't gone to him.
Right.
But they could, you could direct that, we want everything to go to county judge and we want to see how that goes without us doing it ourselves, without us doing the work ourselves. Make it, make it all go in front of the judge, you could try that. Um, or continue as we are, or shift to special magistrate for some cases and the county clean and lien process for the others.
I do like that idea.
The county clean and lien, I would just challenge you all to look at those dollars and cents and look at how many dollars we do not recover in costs that are hard costs that we, that we incur, that we incur, excuse me.
Okay, what did we decide, do we go with the county judge?
Well, we haven't decided anything yet, we're still on the discussion part of it, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, I do not want to make a motion that's gonna fail just because I don't like that. Um, so just in discussion sakes, what I'm, from a discussion sakes standpoint, what I'm hearing is that you all want to give the county judge a chance.
Correct.
Can we do a time certain on that?
That's what I'm asking.
First, first meeting in February.
First meeting in February, report back?
And, and let's take action one way or the other.
We don't see something, yeah.
Because that's right after the first, he'll have thirty one cases to prove himself.
Mr. Harris doesn't like that.
She's shaking her head.
I think that's a little too soon, but.
Yeah, I do too.
I would suggest that we give him two meetings and then we.
So we give him a hundred, a hu- ninety days.
And, um, so that would be.
Thirty days in December, thirty days in January, thirty days in February, it's ninety days. That's what we're willing to give him.
But he hasn't had a, his first one's a thirty, this month is his first.
Companies are still in violation, nothing's being done still, so we're, we're ninety days on the clock.
Indeed.
Well, the, the point is, is we need to see what he does with those January thirty first and what he does with those February.
February thirty first.
Whatever, yeah, February thirty first.
Then we should know by March.
Um, Ms. Butler, are you the proper person to ask, can, can it be pushed up on the calendar with regards to, does it have to be the last day of the month?
She runs that court, she can do that.
No, I can't, no, the judge sets his own calendar. I think February, it's the twenty first of February, I think he's got it set for the, for the next hearing after January.
We'll meet you after that, yeah.
But, I'm not trying to muddy the water, but on Margaret's behalf, when those citations come to our office and we file them and we send out a certified letter, if they don't pick up that letter and we don't have proof that they picked up that letter, they've had service on it, the judge will not hear them.
And, and, and that's okay.
They've got to have service.
And that's fine, what I'm interested in seeing, I want to see the action he does take on the ones he does have in front of him, that's what I'm anxious to see.
And then can they, they hand deliver the ones they don't pick up?
I'm not so sure about that, you know, the, the county wouldn't be able to, you'd have to, um.
The deputy could.
You know, they may be able to send the sheriff out, but it's gonna cost you forty dollars because the clerk's office ain't gonna pay it.
Just take that out as a budget, forty dollars.
Well, again, I, I would, I'd just really like to see what the judge is gonna do, and if we gotta do a time certain on it, if you want to go to, if you don't want to wait past February, let's go to the second meeting in February. And make that the time certain, I understand that, but that moves, uh, actually the meeting is the.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Let's wait after the twenty first then.
Twenty sixth is the.
Yeah, sure, so it'd be after the second, second hearing that he had on his docket.
Yeah.
What, what do, um, do we have any idea what we would view as success? I mean, if there's thirty one that are being heard in January.
Well, if there's no difference at all, we're gonna know we want to move in a different direction for sure.
That's right.
Yeah.
Or, or not significant difference.
Wouldn't I?
You know, so I'm sure the staff can prepare that and say, we had, we had thirty one cases in January, thirty one in February. He continued four, six, whatever, he fined these, whatever, that's what we're wanting to hear. That's what we want to see, that's right.
Okay.
We had how many in the month of November heard, fourteen or sixteen? And what was the outcome?
Are you, can you answer that?
Who was, uh, actually Judge Sloan hear those?
It was a temporary, uh, Povitz. Am I saying his name right? Povitz, that ju- the judge that was before. Provost, yeah, Provost, um, he, we had judgments, but we didn't, it, I don't know how to explain it correctly, but we got a adjudication of guilty. But there was no thirty days to comply, there was no fines on all of them, they were.
Let me just cut this short. He, he didn't complete the, the recommendation like we normally would with the code case. In other words, you usually give them an X number of days to comply, and if they don't, then they're gonna come back before them. Um, also, he'll recommend that, um, you know, that they pay the citation, um, and there's other, you know.
Daily fines.
There's, there's various, um, recommendations that should have come out of that that didn't, and I'm not sure why. Um, but that was a temporary judge, um, and so I, I don't know that we can, um, use that as an example, it's not a good example.
So, Mr. Chair, on those fourteen cases, how many of those are part of the thirty one for the month, or how many of those are part of the total number for the month of January?
I believe four going back.
And the other ten?
Uh, the other ten, some came in compliance, uh, they paid the fines. I would have to look to confirm exactly where all those fourteen went, but I know that four are going back.
Ten out of fourteen, not even a standard judge, ten out of fourteen's a win, I would think.
Pretty close.
I mean, four, four coming back out of ten, not too shabby.
I agree.
So, anyway, once again, we, we need to do a time certain on this, do we want to do the twenty sixth?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
February twenty sixth.
Yes, sir.
So there we go.
February twenty sixth, the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Right after the second meeting of the.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna get the temperature of what's happening once he does his first, once he has his first case.
The twenty first and the twenty sixth, I don't, we won't, we'll have to, right, our, our staff reports have to be done.
We can send it, we can do a placeholder and we can.
Yeah, we'll do a placeholder and we'll put that report. Okay, just want to make sure you have your expectations correct.
What that total budget number is, I, I bet you know it off your head, Ms. Emmerich, but if you don't, that's okay. But what that total number is for demolition, mowing.
Yep.
All of those things, and what we, what we have from a cost perspective, you know, go four, six years, whatever you want to do. And then what we're actually, uh, what we're actually recuperating on those costs, I don't need that history. But I'd just love to know, when we, when we put that cost out there, what are, what are we historically getting back on that?
That's a tough one, because we have not, um, we don't get a report from the courts on the dollars and the fines that are paid. Um, the only, only, uh, tracking that we can do, but we haven't, um, I don't, can't answer why and for how long, but we have not, uh, been tracking the payment of the citations, which are supposed to come to code enforcement to put in, that go to the general fund. Um, and the, um, those, I guess those, um, that amount, those amount of liens that are paid, I'm not quite sure how to get that, uh, information at this point. Um, you have that.
And I'm not, and I'm not sure that it, that's really only one layer to that, I think the other layer to that is, so, we didn't collect a dime, but we spent how much money in the, the pine ear ones and we, we cleaned it up, we mowed it, and two people showed up the next day wanting to buy it.
Right.
That's a good investment, we need to do that every day.
We. I think that, if I can, if I may, Chairman, I think that's an important fact, because you're gonna win some and you're gonna lose some. But overall, you're gonna win because you're going to get them back on the tax roll. So if you go through this process and you're more aggressive and you, ultimately, they go through the process, whether it's a judge, magistrate or whatever, and you go through the process and it, and it goes into someone else's, um, possession, they're gonna clean it up and you're gonna maybe lose a little, but you may gain, but overall, in the long run, you're gonna gain as a community.
I agree.
And I think that's the big picture that we need to be looking at.
There was some hard cost involved, we didn't get a dime of it back.
Right.
It's cleaned up, it's back on the tax roll, there's a good family with the kids living there.
Yeah.
They're a productive park, it's a win.
Yes.
That's what, that's the instructions we gave them in April, and that's what we're doing. I just wanted to make sure that they are following through with what we asked them to do, and that's the end results, is the property is selling.
And I would love to see, you know, some, you know, some metrics that shows us we brought X number of properties in from April. April will be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, and so how many of the blights, so-called what we've, what we've decreed or what they've decreed as blights, have we brought into compliance and or destroyed? And we're actually allowing for that neighborhood to, to experience a rejuvenation of sorts. Because I go back to my soapbox of your, your deputy has to be called, your school has to wear the burden, your hospital has to wear the burden, so on and so forth. Those are all hidden, hard costs to the bottom line of taxpayers of Hendry County.
You're right.
And it's a chasing of the people that we want here versus an embracement of the people that we don't want here.
And I don't think nobody disagree, um, I think we just trying to see exactly, will we go that way to make sure that we covered everything before we go that way?
Yeah.
So.
Good job, Ms. Emmerich.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're done?
I hope so.
And what was the decision?
We'll see you February twenty sixth.
We're gonna do nothing different, we're gonna wait and, we're gonna, we're gonna do what staff has always done. Um, and we're going to wait until the month of February, uh, second meeting to see, uh, what the outcome is from the new judge.
No, I believe in the second meeting, we're gonna move, we're either gonna stay with the judge or we're gonna go with the magistrate, is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
I'd love to see even January, after the January thirty first hearing, I'd love to see sort of a.
Just a report of what he, what his judgments were.
When you get it together, just send it out if you don't mind, I'd love to see that, so we could have, have kind of a mental preparation time.
Yeah, he'll have February on it, twenty first.
Uh, Mr. Lap, do we need a motion on that or, no, we're good to go, we've got the, they have direction, we're good to go, okay. Thank you, Ms. Emmerich.
You did a good job.
Yeah, it was only, it wasn't that bad, you missed your doctor's appointment.
Y'all, y'all did a good job.
Okay, just gonna get us back to the agenda. Again, it's, uh, wards and appearances and presentations.
Okay, wow, wow, it's going forward. At the last meeting, I made a remark concerning the TDC, uh, previous use of EVA advertising. In no way did I mean to suggest that EVA was not a reputable firm or that they did a bad job. My comments is based on the fact that the TDC had very limited budget and in hindsight, the expenditures that left the TDC in a positive, uh, where it could not spend money on events and other needed services. And so, you know, I had worked with these people and they did do a good job, but bottom line is, we just didn't have the money to continue it. So there's nothing wrong with that company.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, Ms. Peregrin.
Uh, good evening, my name is, uh, Daniel Peregrin. I am a resident and a business owner in, uh, Hendry County. I was not present at the last meeting when, uh, some of the items were discussed, uh, but wanted to come and, um, introduce myself and also, uh, maybe field some of the questions that, uh, you guys had about, uh, our proposals. Um, I also want to apologize for the confusion. Um, I understand there were some items missing from, from your packet that, uh, were important in making that decision. So, um, hopefully, I, I believe you guys now have all that information.
Yeah, we do.
About the, uh, uh, Punta Gorda Airport advertising. Um, I am a, a board member at, uh, the TDC, so full disclosure, and, um, I, you know, Mr. Commissioner Harris and I and a few, I don't know if there's any other members here, but, um, we, uh, have a lot of people come and propose things and, and, and vote on them there. Um, and maybe some of the data that we used to, uh, to decide on moving forward on this, uh, item um, didn't make its way into, into your packet, so again, I apologize for that. You guys.
Could you just go on and, and present yours, but, and then we could field questions?
Okay, yeah, I, um, I also want to clarify too on, um, Everglades Marketing. Um, Everglades Marketing is a company I created, um, it's actually owned by Rock Tide. I have, um, about thirty one employees, um, again, I've been in business since, uh, for four years now. Um, we, uh, we try to do community events, um, I own the, the hotel in, in LaBelle, uh, the Rivers Edge Hotel. Um, also, I have a construction company and, and, um, just try to do little jobs here and there to help the county out. I, um, started Everglades Marketing to, um, really separate, uh, our, our marketing, things we need to do, events we need to have from other businesses that I run. Um, currently, it has three employees, um, in that division of the company. And we, uh, we do events at, uh, the Rivers Edge Hotel primarily. Uh, we try to get the community involved and, um, we work to rehab that, uh, facility. And I'm sure some of you guys have, have seen it and, um, hopefully are able to attest to our, um, devotion to, uh, the area. Um, I hope. But, uh, Everglades Marketing, um, proposed the idea to, um, the TDC Board of Advertising in the Punta Gorda Airport. Um, because, uh, after flying through there, I, I travel frequently and, um, after traveling through there, um, I thought it was a good opportunity for the county to have a presence there because there's so many travelers that go in and out of there that, uh, possibly, uh, family, people visiting families. Um, I, uh, I do not, um, compile like all the data myself, I have some people that help me with that. Um, so I can answer questions as best I can, but, um, it's just a feeling, I guess, that I have and apologize that I have nothing more than that. But, uh, there's a lot of tourism that happens in that airport, um, as the packet points out, um, from Lamar, uh, who, who actually is the, uh, the broker of the advertising company, um, for Punta Gorda Airport, um, that backs up, uh, the type of people that travel through that airport, uh, the growth of that airport, which is significant. Um, and, um, reading through this and also traveling through the airport, I thought that it was a great opportunity for the county to, um, have a presence with, um, more of a targeted audience. Um, people that are, are coming to, to visit the area that, um, might not know that we have a beautiful lake that they can go fishing to and might not know that there's events on Fort Thompson, uh, on, on certain Fridays or, um, events like Swamp Cabbage and Sugar Fest and, and big, uh, county, county events. So, um, the idea behind it was, um, we were gonna, uh, put a brochure together, uh, that, uh, we were gonna work with the, the two chambers, uh, LaBelle and Coliston, and, um, also some of the local organizations like Downtown Revitalization Group, um, and list events, um, inviting, uh, tourists that go through the airport to take a brochure with them, uh, so that they have something that talks about the, the, the features of our county that, uh, might be most appealing to those who are actually, uh, visiting, traveling. Um, so, uh, things like fishing and hunting were, were top of the list. Um, but, um, we, uh, through the, um, the meeting at the Tourism Council that we did, uh, they were worried about budgets and, and things. And so, um, one of the misunderstandings that might, uh, be confusing is, um, Everglades Marketing, um, decided to help, uh, the Tourism Council, um, essentially, uh, do a, a year contract instead of a six month contract. And so, um, I offered and maybe I muddied the waters by doing so, but, um, I offered to pay the difference between, uh, a six month contract and a, and a, and a year contract. Um, and so, uh, the offer, and again, Everglades Marketing is, is not profiting from this, uh, we, we're just, we were organizing it um, as, uh, really, uh, to help the, uh, the Tourism Council facilitate the advertising and. the Tourism Council, uh, facilitate the advertising and, and, um, I don't know, uh, just take care of the, the, um, paperwork associated with advertising in the airport. Um, so, I don't know if there's any specific questions about it and I don't know if I described that well, but.
Do we, do the numbers stay the same? The numbers have not changed?
The numbers.
With, with regards to the cost and, and I'm sorry, it was in last month's packet. I didn't bring it. I didn't.
I'm right there with you.
Okay.
Chair, I think it was thirteen thousand.
I wanna say thirteen for the year, correct?
There was two, there were two items that were requested. One was for a New Year's Eve party and one was for, um, the marketing.
That's correct.
Plan as presented.
The marketing, the marketing amount was thirteen.
Thirteen K for the year?
I think.
And you're, and is that total or is that what you paying half of the thirteen?
No, sir. The, the, the contract amount, I believe is, um, and I'll invite Bianca up here. Uh, she helps and she knows the numbers. So, um, I believe it was.
It was twelve-nine. Why didn't you say one?
Yeah, you gotta come up.
Bianca Ross. I work with Everglades Marketing. Um, the contract was a total of twenty thousand, right at twenty thousand. Um, the TDC portion was twelve thousand nine and, um, that's for a six-month contract. If we wanted a year-long contract, anybody, if anybody wanted a year-long contract, it would cost twenty thousand. So what Daniel did was said, I will cover the difference to go from a six-month contract to a year-long contract. And that's what's his portion. So the TDC would be responsible for the twelve-nine, which is what it would've cost anybody for a six-month contract.
Did you, is there any alternatives? Did y'all look at what a billboard on seventy-five would cost?
We actually have.
Well, yeah, yeah, we have, but, um, we, we went through a, um, quite a few things. I mean, on the board that, just like you guys do, there's, you know, a, a group of people there that will present several items. And this is something that was voted on and, and kind of, um, refined, um, through that process. Um, but yes, we, we did talk about several different options and, um, this is one of the things that, uh, we felt as a group was a good, um, I, I.
Yeah.
I can speak, I'm sorry. I can speak to the different options there could be for advertising the county. Um, Daniel has several other, other businesses and as an agency, we look at different ways that we can market even his own businesses and, uh, billboards on Interstate I seventy-five, they are fifteen hundred dollars a month and up and that is, um, just that traffic that's already traveling through. We looked at that. Um, we have certain websites that we run and we look at that data. Uh, why we, why Punta Gorda Airport struck us is because their traffic is steadily increasing, steadily. This year alone, it went up twenty-five percent from last year. So they had one and a half million people that went through that airport, one point five million people. And most of them stay local. Um, the, they're asked who visits certain counties and the other counties, which Henry County is in that other, is increasing every single year. Um, also, we looked at the target demographics that we believe would be drawn to Henry County and they are gonna be your anglers, your hunters, your outdoorsmen. That's right now what we see based on what we know to be true about Henry County, um, and its assets. And so for that, frequent flyers that travel through Punta Gorda, there are a lot of outdoorsmen in that. And of those outdoorsmen, fifty percent of them look at advertisement. Eighty-seven percent of them don't look at online. They don't look at billboards. So those are other numbers that we can email that to you as well. So we did look at other ones. Um, and it just seemed at the time, based on what Daniel saw and what we've seen, what the agency has seen, it's just such a great fit that it's worth trying.
Well, and it was, it was a, it was a board decision to clarify. When we say we, it was the Tourism Council Board.
What, what?
And I can't speak, I, I, I know.
When, when there more than a brochure, when, when there, uh.
We negotiated.
Yeah, when there a TV screen.
Yes, yeah.
And rolling screens.
Um, and it's, it's in your packet. Um.
So it's more than a brochure?
Yes, sir. There's a terminal map in, in, within the packet and it, it shows five, five digital billboards, I believe, that, uh, we're gonna be featured on all five as well as a, um, a static, um, like a canvas. We, we negotiated quite a bit, um, to, to get the best deal we thought, uh, for the county and also for, um, and we, we didn't just, you know, talk to Lamar and tell him to give us just anything. We, we were very specific of what we wanted and, and we're targeted.
Um, and, and, and real quick, in full disclosure, we have business together and that, that needs to be known as well. Um, and I stated at the last meeting about Mr. Peregren, um, everything he does is top-notch. He's done a lot in LaBelle. His family is doing a tremendous amount of building in LaBelle. Um, you know, we, and there's, there's a lot that's taking place. They are really doing a lot there. I mean, there's restaurants, there's homes. Uh, the hotel's not the only venture they have. There's, there's a lot of properties that they have came in, didn't ask for one penny. And I'm just giving my opinion now. They've come in, they've done it, didn't ask for abatements, didn't ask for helping hands. They've done it. They're doing it. I think they're good for the community. Um, I don't know if I need to abstain from voting. That's what I would need to know.
Are you, you're a business partner in some other capacity?
I, I rent the property of our church. I rent from, uh, Mr. Peregren. That's your mom and dad, right?
Um, no, sir. It's actually one of the entities they have partners in, but.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everyone knows out in the open, so no one can say.
You're a tenant. Your church is a tenant.
That's right.
Yeah, you're not, you don't gain by.
No.
His leasing activities. You're just a tenant.
The key is, I want everyone here and everyone watching to understand that it is out in the open. It's not something that someone can go back later and say, you didn't disclose that. That way everyone knows where we're at. And what I'm saying about the gentleman is not have anything based on that. It has based on what I've seen his, I've seen what they've done in the community. I've watched them from the time they've been here to where they're at now. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that everyone understood before we ever got any further, that's where I'm at as far as the relationship. So I didn't want to make sure no conflict. So I'm not.
I know what the ask, what was the ask for? I know what the, the total of it was. What was the ask for?
Twelve-nine.
That was, did you ask for twelve or did you?
It was twelve-nine.
Actually, it was thirteen thousand was the amount. It was thirteen thousand even is what the amount for the, uh, advertising. And it was five thousand for the, uh, for New Year's Eve party.
That's what told me.
I, you know, and I, and, and look, from a, from a personal perspective and board, I, you know, I'll qualify what I'm gonna say. I love promoting the county. I love putting our message out there. I love branding and doing what we're doing. I love the idea of doing this. It just seems expensive to me. It seems like we have to get an awful lot of return for basically, you know, a little over a thousand dollars a month of county money or TDC money plus the money that you're gonna kick in. So I, it just seems high. But so does engineering fees that we have to pay, you know, and, and so does all the other things that, you know, that, that I think is, is too expensive that we do. So, um, that's, that's my opinion. I would love to advertise. I wish it was cheaper is my main thing.
Mr. Chair.
Me too.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Peregren, first of all, thank you for coming to our community and thank you for engaging the process. How many years have you said you've been here now?
Um, I believe it's four.
That's pretty impressive.
We, we started with that Sears store.
Yeah.
So, then.
We've been, we've been here for six years.
Good deal, good deal. Um, well, um, and I, and I also hear in your presentation that you've given me, what I, what I think I see is, is someone that has initiative that's wanting to push a brand. The, the major concern that I have and still to, today I have this concern is I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum as Commissioner Swindle. I think that twenty thousand dollars is, is really a penance in the grand scheme of marketing. Um, I, you know, you know, Lamar gave you a nice PowerPoint presentation. Uh, to me, it doesn't give me enough details about what it is that we're actually going to, uh, highlight to say, this is why we, we think we're gonna see a return on investment from a person walking through that terminal that likes to catch a large mouth bass or, you know, wants to do a day trip out here to try to shoot an Oscar the turkey or whatever it may be. Um, you know, you, you mentioned one and a half million people go through Punta Gorda Airport, you know. I think in November of eighteen, eight hundred thousand went through RSW. I don't know what those numbers could comp out to from a standpoint of, of, you know, to advertise. And I know that Lamar does advertising in RSW. Um, you know, they, they own a number of billboards on I seventy-five and all that stuff. I just think that, um, on, on any of these dollars and cents that I, that I'm gonna support, with the exception, and, 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 and I draw an asterisk next to this, and that, cause because I make no claims about it. If, if you want, you know, I would love to know, what is it, Ms. Hunter or Jennifer, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly a year now that we're picking in on TDC? Two hundred and fifty K a year roughly. You know, I'd love to see us double down and, and, and put a bullseye on one or two subjects, a reputable firm that comes in and says, this, this is what we're going to do. This is what we're gonna push to an international audience and we're gonna see how that, that works for us. And we make ourselves the bass fishing capital of the United States of America. A- and we do that. Just throwing that out there as an example. Or we make ourselves, uh, you know, I don't know, there's other, there's other variables that are out there. Um, I think that, um, the ability in this twenty thousand dollar packet, counting your money, the ability for us to be able to measure that return on investment is going to be difficult, almost to impossible. Do you have an idea? This is not my, end of my question, but do you have an idea of how you would measure that?
Um, we've had several different options with regard to that. Uh, things like coupons that we can track. Um, also, uh, portions of the brochure that we can, um, like QR codes that people can scan. And if they scan them, you know that they're in people's hands. We also are gonna have to supply the shelves. So we're gonna know how many are gone. Um, uh, those are all methods that, that we intended on, um, you know, using to track that, that data. And, um, I appreciate you saying that. I, I think so too and I would love to double it, uh, triple it or quadruple it. Um, I think, uh, one of the, the things that we've, um, done to help grow our business and I appreciate, um, uh, Commissioner Wills, uh, talking about, uh, me and my family. We, we, we like to do, uh, base hits and, um, we've been successful at that. And, uh, this is one of the things that, um, again, was presented to the TDC Board and we thought was a solid base hit. Um, it's, it's not gonna, um, totally improve the economy of Henry County overnight, but I think it's, um, it, it's been a, um, a very good approach for the, uh, the board, uh, the TDC Board and we believed as a group that it would help the Henry County as a whole, um, and, and doing that be a successful base hit. So.
But anyway, the TDC Board met and we have, I think maybe five from Cloiston, four from LaBelle, and they asked, uh, drilled Daniel them for over an hour and the twenty thousand dollar figure was too high for the TD Board to accept. And that's when he did the seven.
Yeah, I agree too.
And, uh, then when he did that, well, everybody charmed in and asked a few more questions. And, uh, especially the board members from Cloiston thought it was a good idea, cause we was, they were gonna push the fishing. Our, our biggest thing in the county for TDC is fishing, is the lake. And, uh, we have the lake and the river and, you know, birders and that's about it. We don't have much. So we're trying to come up with other ideals and other avenues to bring people into the county. And if we do this a year and nothing's changed, then we need to not do it again.
It, it was a very positive, um, uh, meeting. I, I think after we decided to go forward to it, we actually were approached by, uh, Billy Swamp Creek, um, that.
Safari.
So, sorry, uh, Safari, that they were actually gonna even help us, um, print the brochures to put in the brochure holder. So it was, everyone had a buy-in. I mean, it wasn't just me. I, I just said I would pay the difference. So that's all. But a lot of the, uh, members, um, of the TDC Board, um, got invested in it in one way or another. So.
It kinda goes back to, you know, you gotta think outside the box. What have we been doing?
Awful silence.
Nothing. We've been doing nothing. So do we think outside of the box? We move forward? We try to, we try marketing or do we continue to do nothing and expect a different result?
And, and, and to that, I would just say that, that I think that this is, while this is an effort, I think this is a half-baked cake. You know, we're, we're talking about spending twenty grand and we're, we're not talking about what that is actually gonna look like from a standpoint of, you know, the, the final product that's gonna be pushed out. We had an entity that came, presented to us, told us it was gonna be, you know, this is not a marketing plan. This is, this is demographic, uh, analysis and, and, you know, I understand that TDC wants to hire an entity to market them. I get that. I still go down, I still go back to, in my opinion, you should double down. You should allow people to give a presentation of actually what it is that you're going to produce, how you're going to, uh, measure that, that product that you're putting out on the streets and then what you're anticipating from a, a return on investment. I think, I think, you know, this is a, this is a, an, an step with initiative that's supported. I think there's a solid business person that's behind trying to create this, but I, I don't, I don't think this is a, I think this is just twenty K to appease, um, I think this is twenty K from the TDC dollars to appease a sect of our community that says, we're, we're pushing one other area and we need to push another area. I served as the chair of the TDC for a long time and I think, I think that we need to, to tweak some things on that. So that's my thought.
Chair. Our biggest push was gonna be the lake.
Mm-hmm.
The lake and fishing.
Okay. Do you want to move along?
Yeah, may, may, Mr. Swindle or Ms. Bird?
Bianca? I do wanna clarify that Everglades Marketing did not pitch a marketing plan. Uh, it was not requested of us from the TDC to pitch a marketing plan to the, to the TDC or to the B O C C. Um, marketing plans are very, um, they can be a long process. They require a lot of research ahead of time so that they're complete. Um, this was as a result of the conversations that the TDC Board has had over the past several months that I've been able, been privileged to attend just as a spectator, um, even on Daniel's team. So I wanna make sure that that's clear, that there was not a marketing plan that we put in place. However, the TDC has had some of their goals in their own meetings about, you know, reaching out to people. And the other clarification I wanna say is of the five billboards and the one, the five digital ads and the static ad, we can have as many digital ads on there as possible. And what that means is the whole county gets to celebrate themselves in whatever way they see fit. Um, we wouldn't, and you're talking about the brochures and things. That's absolutely something that the TDC or the B O C C can have final approval on. What are you gonna be putting out there? Uh, the thing is, is you're renting space and that space is available for a limited amount of time. And at the time it was presented to the TDC, it was, it's, we're gonna lose it because the airport is growing. But as far as the design of the brochures and the material, that is something that the B O C C and the TDC can have a say in. Absolutely.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I moved to approve the thirteen thousand dollar expenditure to the TDC.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Swindle and a second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion?
The, the main.
Go ahead.
The main, the main kicker for me is tough for me to support, but the fact that we've got a personal business that's willing to lay down the funds and, and to back it, uh, I, I think that's a heck of a support network and we need to support that. So.
Then we can look at it in a year.
I did go visit them and I did explain to them the, the return that's, you know, that they was talking about that we did not see, but if we don't, to, you know, to see what's gonna, I wish it was six months and not a year. Um, and I wish it was half the qua, the cost, cause I would definitely go with the half of the cost for at least six months. But I did like what I seen. I did like our conversation and, um, you don't know unless you try, but who expense are we trying to that? But you have put out something to show that you're willing to, you know, to make this happen. So, you know, we, unless we try, we won't know. So I like, I hope the return is positive.
Ms. Chair, I was just saying, you know, obviously I've, I've, I've been saying from day one that we, we need to look at an actual marketing plan and actual overall picture of how we wanna pitch that. Um, I can't support this in, in the method that it's created at, at this time. Obviously, I, I think it's gonna get the support that it needs to move forward. I would just challenge the TDC, Mr. Chair, uh, Harris, I would, I would ask that you all really look into how you're gonna measure the return on investment on anything that you are awarding dollars and cents to and, um, and bringing back something to us from a, from a board perspective of what do we wanna see with those dollars and cents? Um, and then I would also challenge everybody, time's certain. You know, it's within our, it's within our, uh, rights to utilize, uh, a portion of those proceeds to, to create our, um, our, our facilities, have upgrades, have capital improvements, you know? Um, let me give you an easy example. Um, I don't know what the dollars and cents are associated with LaBelle High School getting a rubber track, but I'm pretty sure that TDC dollars can be spent on that. I don't know what the dollars and cents are associated with, uh, with, uh, you know, looking at a, a joint facility that's ran by the county, the city of LaBelle and West Rec and repaving a basketball and making a multi-purpose complex. But I think we need to look at that. I think that in my tenure as a commissioner, we've never looked at those things and we've never really ventured out to say, how are we gonna spend those dollars and cents? And, and, you know, when I was a boy in high school, uh, we would have a twenty-five to thirty-five team. thirty-five team track meet that came to Cloiston that generated a lot of energy, that generated a lot of excitement. We haven't had a track meet here in probably a half a dozen years conservatively because we don't have the capital, and we don't have, excuse me, we don't have the infrastructure that supports that. And, uh-
That, that would fall under TDC.
That absolutely would, but, but in years past, we've never, we, in, in the entire time that you've been a commissioner, Commissioner Harris, have you ever had to vet that discussion here at a board meeting?
No.
No. And I think that we need, I think that we need to start looking into that.
I did talk to, um, Attorney Lab. Uh, did you have a time to research?
And that's why I wanna hoard every dollar that we possibly can. And that means making Mary Ann Martin upset for a year or so and, and making F L W, you know, come and tell us why we gotta pitch them or whatever it may be, you know? And, um, and, and knowing, what are we gonna do with that? Maybe, and I'm pretty sure the way it reads, you know, X number has to be spent on marketing, X number has to be spent on capital improvements, all that, so on and so forth. So, yeah, it's, it's a moot point. You can't even, you can't even venture to take money away from, from F L W and their tournaments. Or, you know, do, do the, the, the details show that we should be supporting not only having an F L W tournament, not only having, uh, you know, a, a couple different, you know, Hundred Mile Challenges or something like that, you know, different aspects coming in, but we need to double down and, and, and go after Bass Anglers Sportsman Society and get the, the other NASCAR, you know, trucks in here as it relates to bass fishing, you know, on an international basis. So that's it. Uh, that, that's where I'm at. And I look, I hope that we could look into that and I hope that the TDC would wanna engage that with us.
Good comments.
Mr. Lab, did you have a chance to check on all that?
Well, I know we talked about TDC funds. I, I didn't remember the track.
Well, not track, I'm talking about specific, like buildings.
Commissioner Harris, if, if I may. So after the last meeting, I got with our tourism director, Emily Hunter, and because you had so many questions and also with me being new in this role as well, and hearing some of the ideas and suggestions that you brought out, I've asked her to do a, a complete summary revamp. Um, we're gonna bring it back to you, the board, and also share it with the tourism board, just as a refresh, what dollars we have, what we can and we cannot spend it on. And it's, it's, you know, everybody can refresh themselves. It might be, you know, remedial for some folks, but maybe not for others. And get a clear direction from you, the board accounting commissioners, as to how you wanna see those dollars, what your focus is, what, you know, we talk about economic development and all these different things, and there's sometimes creative legal ways to spend these dollars differently than maybe we've been doing in the past. So we're gonna be bringing that to you sometime in February, March at the very latest, but I hope it'll be probably second meeting in February to get that direction from you. Then we'll be communicating that back to the TDC board. And so then everybody's under a clear focus, laser hopefully focus of what we're trying to accomplish and then we won't have so many-
The main thing we wanna know is what we can spend the money on.
Correct.
And that's, that's what matters.
Last comment, Mr. Chair, I know we gotta vote, is, you know, I wanna, I wanna hear from Mr. Zimmerley or whoever it is that needs to tell us, what is the status of the LaBelle Civic Center? And what do we need to do to make that thing a Cadillac? I mean, I've seen the bathrooms, I've seen a couple other upgrades, and that makes me happy to see. I know that those were direct correlation of TDC dollars. The John Boy Auditorium, the same thing. But I wanna talk with the city of Cloiston and know what it is that they wanna see that facility look like and, and what their thoughts are on it. And we, we've gotta upgrade those. We've gotta, we've gotta be able to have good facilities to be able to host anything, so.
That's very true. And that's, you know, it's all good, good conversation, or, or a bit of it, good conversation.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the motion, uh, we additionally need for you to waive the business relationship because Mr. Peregrin, being a TDC member and it is, this would go to his business. So there was a form, it was part of your packet last time, we need to have you approve the, that business, um, affiliation.
You need that form of motion?
You can include it in the same-
Yeah, amend your motion, please, yeah.
Please amend the motion to include the waiver-
Waiver.
Okay. Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Swindle and a second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Guys, can I, uh, briefly talk to, uh, New Year's? New Year's, the New Year's event, uh, that was, uh, obviously over New Year's. Um, we, uh, we had the event. I know, um, Commissioner Turner, you mentioned that you can have a heck of a party for five thousand dollars. Um, we, uh, it's an event that we, we do to, um, showcase, uh, the north side of the river of LaBelle. Um, we've worked really hard with West Rec, um, to improve that park, um, and, uh, really create a beautiful scene on the river. Uh, we, um, use those funds strictly for advertising outside the county. It was a matching grant that we were requesting. So I just wanted to clarify, uh, we were not gonna use those funds for anything party-related. It was only to advertise. Um, we decided not to advertise after hearing that, uh, we were not gonna give it five thousand dollars, um-
How many people did you have?
Uh, we had about eighty-seven and it was, uh, significantly less than last year. Uh, last year we had over a hundred and fifty.
Now, I think that's what stuck with all of us. You know, a hundred, a five grand for a hundred and fifty-person party?
It is a, a different clientele that is, or a different, uh, guests coming. Um, it's, it's, we don't, um, it's not like a huge, open to the public event. It's more like bankers, um-
Engineers, they're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair. You charge for this event?
Yes.
Okay.
We do, it's, it's a not-for-profit event, though. Again, it's just to showcase, uh, the area.
It's a not-for-profit that showcases the north side of the river?
The north side of the river as well as the hotel. Um, and it, it's an investment in, in the north side of the river, uh, that, I, I actually, I, I'd love to have you out and kinda see the, the place. It, it would maybe help, you know, kinda paint a picture for you of what we're doing.
You can paint a great picture, but I can guarantee you I'm not gonna support that five K next year either, boss.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that it won't be a four to one.
You got four to support you.
Okay. Uh, well, I'd still like to invite you out.
Yeah, I would love to come out, so.
I'll bring him out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we are moving into public hearings. First number is petition CPA eighteen dash oh 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 three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move to adopt CPA eighteen dash zero 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 three.
That's second.
Here we have a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Bird. This being a hearing of the public, is there anyone in the public would like to speak to this? Any further discussion on the board?
Glad to see that my, my, uh, my part of the county and my neighbors are, it, it, quote unquote, are making a positive impact on the county and, uh, would further the county's goals of economic diversity.
You brought that?
No, that came out of your mouth, not mine.
So, there you go.
Your neighbors.
And my neighbors, that's right.
Okay, there's no further discussion. We give a motion on this? We, we had the motion in a second already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're up for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There you have it.
He mentioned, uh, public hearing and no one stepped forward just for the record.
Calm down.
Nobody said anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the adoption of CPA eighteen dash zero 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 four.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Uh, this also is a, uh, hearing of the public. Is there anyone in the public would like to address this? He said, no, we just wanna go home. Is there any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence under action, we have a letter of request. Agriculture labor program, who's presenting that, Mr. Lab?
I'll take care of it. This is just a letter of request, um, regarding ALP, um, to support and give their gratitude for all the programs that they give in Henry County. There's-
So move.
Second.
Here we had a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Guys, under FYI, you see. Be change order.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, as presented, final amount for O A N K.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that was it, wasn't it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just, um, I, I, I would like to brag on Susan Block just a little bit, um, the director of the Early Loan Coalition of Southwest Florida. Um, you know, Ms. Block and I, I think it was probably eight years ago, had some very boisterous, uh, debates, uh, in, in, in the group that I work with, Education Improvement Task Course. Um, and to her credit, Ms. Block, um, challenged the data that I was presenting. Uh, we had a good banter. Uh, she, she went and, uh, re-engaged, and I will tell you, that woman, in my opinion, has really stepped up, um, to, to make sure that Henry County has, has representation. And she is trying to, to move the, the education, uh, paradigm. You know, she's trying to, she's trying to make a shift occur. And so I just wanna give, uh, her and her organization, um, a shout out. And challenge any of you all to find somebody to get on that board. I believe Henry County probably still has a board spot that's open on there. It would be really good for us to get on there.
Do we? I thought, I thought it was covered.
I don't know, check it out.
Okay, uh, yeah. Yep. Good comments, though. You're right, you're a hundred percent on, on target.
Real quick, Joe Pepe, Health Department, Henry County. I, uh, I used to serve on that board and, uh, Susan does an amazing job with her team. I second your comments. And there's always a representative that she recruits from this region to sit on that board, as well as there's always, um, some, many people from health, um, also, uh, from the, uh, care centers as well as, uh, from public health as well. So she has a really good mix, uh, she does a great job, and she's been out to Captain Henry dinners and all kinds of other things as well. So she's engaged in the community on other events as well, so I second your efforts. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Um, was that required action? It was under FYI.
Right.
We're good. Uh, we're moving to staff reports. Uh, request for a waiver of zoning application. I'm assuming you're presenting that one?
So this is a request for a waiver for a zoning application, um, by Mr. and Mrs. Jones. Um, in two thousand and six, uh, they paid forty-six hundred dollars to process a P U D for mining, um, and, um, in, uh, two thousand and seven, they paid five hundred dollars for a site development plan. All of these fees have been changed over the years and we've lowered fees and, and, um, changed some a little bit, um, um, to have flat fees. Um, they didn't complete the site development plan and what they'd like to do is revert the zoning back to, um, A two, uh, but legally that has to go through the public hearing rezoning process. And so they've requested a fee waiver of the thousand dollars for the application fee. Um, and if approved, they would, um, work with staff, uh, to process that amendment, which would require very minimal, um, um, application materials, um, to bring it forward. And, um, staff is supportive of this recommendation.
To waiver the fee.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Parker?
How in the world are we gonna spend a million dollars on garbage cans?
We're not.
It's not with me. Done, next.
My one comment I'd like to add is this, basically, I wrote all the information for you to read if you have any comments, but one option you may wanna consider is in five years, your contract's gonna be up with WCI. You put it out to rebid, you include the cost of the containers in the bid. Might be surprising what you get, cause you have a lot of people looking and you can spread that cost over a longer-term contract, maybe fourteen years, twelve, don't know.
So you're not recommending any action now?
No, it's just submitted your information because a few board meetings back-
Yeah, we asked, you're right.
You asked.
Anyway, I read it and I, I just think we should keep everything the same right now.
It's inconvenient for some folks to have to buy cans. I'm one of them, but I'll keep buying them before I obligate the county for that.
And then the only thing he's gotta worry about is, uh, uh, his contingent fund that he's been using is don't let it get too low. And, uh, the only way to do that, i- if you wanted to do it in a simple way is, you know, go up ten dollars a time or something like that to try to pay it back.
Right, I think you're good for about five, six years, but you're gonna have to do something, cause right now-
It'll run out eventually.
Costs exceed revenue.
Yeah. Okay.
Our costs are exceeding our revenues in our solid waste account today.
Yes, contingency funds covering the shortfall, cause we had a large contingency fund, so we were using that.
And we have a, a five-year window?
Probably about five years, yes, sir.
Okay.
Recommend you do something along the way, maybe, every two years or something.
Small increases.
Small increases, so you don't have a big one and residents get mad.
Okay.
Well, most of, most of them's upset now simply because part of the county has the totters and part doesn't.
Right.
So you can see that they're, they're paying the same amount of money as anyone else, but they're not receiving the full service, so that's the complaint. And it's a genuine complaint. And I agree with you, I'm, I'm not furnished either, I, uh, but, you know, so it's, uh, but it is something we need to look at, you know, going forward.
Does the whole county get two pickups a week or not?
Yes. What kind of gets two trash?
What about City of LaBelle? I heard they only get one.
It's one.
I can tell you it's one.
What a week.
Wait, wait, ask that question again. You say, is the county on two pickups a week?
Yeah.
No, we're on one, where I live.
Well, we're on two.
Two?
I, I only get one. No, well, I only take it one. Maybe I said that's one. Okay, that's two.
We're not gonna tell you about the second.
Yeah. Shouldn't count if I don't take it. Okay. I missed it today, that's what it is.
Mr. Lab, we don't, there's no action to be taken on this, it's just for discussion principles.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parker.
What, what, what would the outcry be, though, if you went, if you went? Obviously, there's gonna be a cost reduction if you go to one pickup a week. What, was that gonna set people on fire?
We talked about it, but one time.
I don't know if it would or not, how residents feel about it, but we were, wanted to ask in W, um, it was W S I at the time, it was only gonna be like a twenty dollars difference for the whole year. I'd pay the twenty dollars personally, just have the trash picked up on Christmas or Thanksgiving, cause you have so much waste, but-
So they said, they said, by reducing the haul, an entire countywide, it saves $20 on the year.
That's what it was.
I don't, I don't believe that is.
But I think if you put it out to bid, you would, I'm not saying nothing bad about WCI. But you put it out to bid competitively.
Yeah.
Then pencils get real sharp because they're vying for the contract.
Yeah.
And you give it a long term, you'll be able to get those cans included, the remainder of the county.
Absolutely.
Who's, the ones that have cans now, are they the auto dumps or all those auto dumps or not?
No.
Not all of it. It was supposed to be an automated service, but it's not completely.
They won't do it in the small rural areas where we're partially populated.
They have to haul it to the back.
Yeah, yeah.
And they got a little clip they added on the dump.
Okay, okay.
So you said there's how many years prior to that contract?
About five years.
Oh, we did it last year.
Five and a half.
Or a year, yeah. Yeah, or maybe a year and a half ago.
You run that big truck two times around, that's, and you change it to one, that's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
But you can mutually renegotiate, correct?
Sure, it could be a mutually agreed upon amendment.
I bet it won't be.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
The placeholder MOU?
Yes, sir. This is the MOU with HRMC. This was emailed to you all yesterday, I believe. And we created a MOU that the hospital is agreeable to. And it just outlines the various responsibilities for the hospital, as well as the county for transport services.
Ms. Davis, I have no problem with it, other than some serious concerns about the fiduciary Lee carrying everything out on the hospital's end. And I would just encourage, you know, staff to watch it through a unbelievable microscope.
Say that again.
Very concerned. I have no problems with the MOU. I like the MOU. I, I felt like that it protected us, it protected the hospital. But based on the things after, after getting complaints, starting off with the helicopter and after we started dealing with the helicopter flights, after we started digging into that, after we started digging into why are so many patients getting transported out? Why are people walking to the helicopter to be flown out? You know, and all these things we're hearing, and, and it's just staggering. And so I've got concerns about ensuring the hospital upholding their end of the MOU. And I want to make sure that, you know, our staff is doing everything they can to watch everything and, and to make sure that everything's being carried out appropriately.
Understood.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair, right along the same lines, did, did everybody see the report that our county administrator sent to us on, on the number of helicopter rides that occurred?
Yeah, that's amazing.
I don't know if y'all got the update, but in the month of December, there were 31 that actually occurred. Did everybody get that? So, so it was 176 plus 31.
They don't have that in Lee County.
Say, say again?
They probably don't have that in Lee County.
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. Those, those would be interesting statistics to look at. Uh, and it's, you know, I doubt it's anywhere near that. Because I think what happens at Lee County or some of their facilities is that they actually process the people that come in.
They're closer.
Are people coming in. No, it's not that they're closer. All, see, the reason why the transports are occurring is because they can't provide said service at Henry Regional Medical Center.
May, maybe or maybe not.
Well, and that's, and that's not up to us. And that's not up to the hospital board. It's up to the physicians that are on call at time.
However.
It's the medical professionals.
However, we have a huge financial stake in it. And so I think that at least we should have a seat at that table, and that should be explained to us.
Don't disagree with you in any way, shape, or form. With the blessing of this board, I would, I would like to ask that we, as a commission, formally request that, that, and, and listen, this, what I'm asking may turn into Henry Regional Medical Center saying, well, you know what, you, we, we think you guys sort of ought to start mining your Ps and Qs. And I'm all about an outside entity coming in and looking at us with, with a microscope. I love things like that. Uh, in my previous profession, we called it self-scouting. And it's amazing how much human error creates so many problems. And the old adage of, well, that's the way we've always done it, is, is a get out of jail free card. And so as it relates specifically to, that's the way we've always done it. I asked the county administrator to engage in a conversation with Al Perry, when he was still acting city manager, to find out. And, and I simultaneously asked from R.D. Williams, the CEO of the hospital, what are the, the legal mandates that are saying we have to shut that road down next to Henry Regional Medical Center? Why, why are we doing that? And why have we been doing it forever? Conservatively, two weeks went by. I'm going to say a little bit more. No one could produce documentation. There was an anecdotal email that said that's what the trauma hawk or the flying companies want to see happen. But there was no, you know, there was no, uh, there was no process set in place legally binding us to do that. I, you know, I asked the county administrator to please keep moving on this. At the same time, I received an email as well that said, it was, it was a Dobie-Ackerback file that talked about proper protocols of how you build a, a landing zone. And I don't know about y'all, but I don't care what proper protocol is. That's not my bag, baby. It's not what I do. I don't build landing zones. And to me, that's the director of the hospital, maybe the county administrator, maybe director of VMS. All those guys can, can meet and put their gray matter together. I just know that we have a hard cost. We, we spend basically 70 cents on every dollar. That's actually 67 cents, but just round up. 70 cents on every dollar that's associated with the firemen going out there and shutting down that road so that the trauma hawks can come in and out. And, uh, and I've, and I've asked our county administrator to engage in that process because that occurring over 200 times a year is, it's ludicrous, you know? From a cost perspective.
I was under the understanding that now they're using someone in-house and, and they wasn't going out anymore. Am I right?
I, I do have an update on that. So, so today I've spoke to Mr. Williams. I've also spoke with Travis Reese from the city of Cloiston. And as of to, as of yesterday, the Cloiston PD and/or the Henry County Sheriff's Office is going to be responding to close down the landing zone. However, yesterday, it was stated that the fire department showed up. After speaking with Mr. Reese, it was because they were meeting together. It was the first day, you know, just to make sure everybody knew what, what needed to happen. They did that collectively together. When I spoke with Mr. Williams this morning, they hadn't had any, any landing zones as of that point in time. But then I shared it up with Mr. Reese that going forward, he said that Chief Angel got with dispatch to make sure that they're dispatching properly. It'll go first to Cloiston PD if they're not available, because that could happen. Then it'll go to the sheriff's office. And it still could be the fire department if something is occurring where, where nobody can respond. But they will be third called out, in other words. And that is, as far as I'm aware, that is, that is what's happening as of right now.
Do you think that, that Cloiston Police Department is responding with, with multiple? I mean, it's, it's not our wheelhouse, obviously. But do you think they're responding with multiple vehicles? Or are they just shutting it down with one? Have you heard?
I believe it's more, it's multiple. I believe there might have been a, a misunderstanding initially with, with what the requirement was. But now that they've got it, they've got it.
That's what, that's what drives me nuts, is there is no requirement. You know, and to me, it's just, I, I go back to other people's money. And that's why we're sitting in these chairs, is to be mindful of other people's money. And I just think, you know, that, that cost, people, oh, well, it's $65,000, plus minus roughly. It's 65,000? That's a significant chunk to, to Henry County, you know, and to the city of Cloiston. And, um, and, and I think that we, we got to start drilling in on a lot of these things. I've requested the county administrator to give me the policy, how it relates countywide. And I've asked her to, to vet that, so to speak.
Which policy?
As it relates to our volunteer fire departments.
Oh.
And how, what is protocol, Commissioner Swindle? I don't know. In the report that was given to me, it stated that 176 times, I don't know if it was 13 or 15 firemen showed up, you know, plus the 31 for the month of December. And, um, you know, to me, I have a hard time understanding that, that, first off, it requires that kind of manpower. And secondly, that, that, you know, on the other side of that equation is, why are we having that many transfers coming out of the hospital? That's not, that's not our wheelhouse either. But one thing that we can control is, is what, how and why are we bound to respond to that? I don't want to put anyone in harm's way. I'm talking about the public now. But guys, if you start talking about 65,000 over X number of years, you know, you can buy the houses and knock them down over, over a 20-year span. And, and, and is that the reason why? I don't know. No one's able to give me anything legally to why we have to shut that road down. And, and I'll just tell you, in my other world that I live in, you know, um, you know, we shut down entire bridges with two flagmen, you know, at $9 or basically like $10 or $11 an hour now, you know? And, um, and, and, and we do that all the time on main thoroughfares, you know? I'm not making light of the situation. This is all life or death type of stuff. And I understand our volunteer firemen do a good job, but I want to look at those costs. I want to look at costs from A to Z throughout the county. And I want us to start paying attention to those things. Because I think that, I'm hoping that there, there's not going to be, you know, a situation where this is more standard operating procedure that we, that we're not seeing. We're just, we're constantly having these calls. We're constantly having 15 people show up. And, and, and then what's the logic behind that? Are we not able to find a bunch of volunteer firemen? Then what do we have to do to increase that roster? How does that all play out from a cost standpoint?
Why do you need 15 people, too?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Because I know the way the voluntary fire, the way it works in LaBelle, when the buzzer goes off, everybody shows up. If they have a fender bender, then they all, used to get $25 a call.
Yes, sir. And so, and so, so to that point, Commissioner Harris, so if everybody shows up, does everybody get $25 a call?
They turn their names in to the crew leader, and he gives them.
And see, and, and, and. It may be a situation where we actually have less people responding, getting paid a higher threshold on the average. But it works out to be, you know, at a wash and/or a savings, based on the volume and what those details show. But I just think it's time with, with the new changing of the guard, with our county administrator, the fact that in my tenure, we've looked at this really one time. I was told, you, the, 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 everything was, you know, just status quo, it needed to remain the same. We actually needed to spend more money per year. Think about it. I got $65,000 that we were spending on those, on those landing zones. And I'm dying to know what it's going to cost to put that fence up. And if that's going to be able to remedy this issue, that fence is not going to cost $10,000, you know? If it does, I'll be shocked. But let's just round it up and say it's 20 grand, which it ain't.
It's engineering.
Yeah.
But, but we don't know how the, why, how the 15 would show up.
No, sir, I have no clue. And, and, and I really.
But you'd think if you only needed three, you would call them.
Yes, sir. I don't know. I'm, I'm not a dispatcher. I don't pretend to be one. And I've never been on the volunteer fire department. And I don't want this to come across as, you know, attack of, of what service they render. I've had countless people tell me, for the price that we pay, we get way above board service. But I'm just saying, it all goes back to other people's money for me, you know? And, and, and the fiduciary responsibility that we have. Yes, sir.
That's a good, that's a good topic. Um, that's a good, you know, you're exactly right. It is, it's other people's money. And we were put in this position to protect the, the voices out there that can't be heard here every night. So that's a, that's a good conversation to have with Ms. Davis, to have, you know, going forward. And, and it is countywide. Let's look countywide and see where we can, we can save the money. I mean, we'd all love to reduce the taxes even more. I know Commissioner Swindle, Commissioner Turner talks about that budget this year. And, and I agree. I'm a taxpayer as well. But let's, let's see where the county, like you said, let's, let's self-check. Let's look in here and see where we can, we can make things better in, in the house. That's a good conversation. And I don't believe there's any. Direction required on that as well, other than what will be given, is that correct?
Well, we need a motion to approve the, the MOU.
Interletal agreement.
The agreement with the west.
I moved, I moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do, I do have agenda addition, if I may. It's from tourism. Emily, do you want to present the additional, this is with the members?
Make a motion to ratify that as presented.
Okay.
On the TDC.
Got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Did you get this?
We're adding, adding Melanie McGahey.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yes, sir. And, um.
All right. And reappointing Hillbilly Zimmerman.
Reappointing Ms. Zimmerman and Ms. England.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. You did a great job.
Yeah, good, good speaking.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the third agreement between Henry County and Bush Ross PA.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve, um.
Fourth amendment.
Fourth amendment with Foley and Lardner.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris.
And, and we have the separate agreement with AIA for legal expenses.
With AIA, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir. And item B, approve the agreement relating to legal expenses with AIA.
And to be clear, the, the agreement did have an amendment after the board packet. AIA asked for it, their obligation to be a not to exceed $75,000. And that was the estimated amount from the attorney. But it's been plugged into the agreement. So that was an amendment. As well as Mr. Wade's title was adjusted. So there's been a couple tweaks, but with those adjustments, we recommend approval.
Okay.
So we had a, a motion by Commissioner Turner. Do we get a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We're, we're down.
B3? We've finished that already?
No, we're done.
We're going to bring that up again.
We, we might have a few more minutes.
Hear those minutes one more time?
Okay, at this point, is there any question in the public who would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. Alan Mandell, CEO of Goodwheels. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider the decision you made to terminate the fuel contract with Goodwheels and only to present the impact of that decision. We ca, we have calculated the cost of the additional fuel cost. Our operating expenses will go up. The result will be about 550 people in Henry County not getting rides. So that's why I would like you to reconsider it. Any questions?
Well, I'm not going to reconsider it. And, uh, we, I think we've instructed the county administrator to look at different options to ways to go in a different direction.
Why are we hearing so much negative with Goodwheels? The services, the fuel, our bill's not getting paid, everything's getting cut.
Great, great question.
And I get that you're depending on some other funds, but man, this is getting taxing on you.
Let me, let me, thank you for raising the questions. And it, it will address yours and yours with the same answer.
You should have brought it down.
Number one, well, I think you need to know this, sir. Number one, we cannot make a payment unless we have an invoice in our possession. Number two.
Mr. Mandell.
Wait, wait, please, let's just stop there. We had HBK look at this. The day I spoke with Ms. Davis on the phone, we had one invoice. It was 60 days late. And we had just gotten another one, which was not due for payment yet. That's not the main point. The other thing is, I couldn't guarantee if you changed your minds tonight, I could not guarantee payment in less than 60 days. Because the state of Florida does not pay us for 60 days. Now, why are you also getting lots of complaints right now? We have our money from the state. We're taking several thousand people, 1,500, I believe it is, on TD right now. That's paid for by the state every year. We have a contract in place for five years with the, with the commission. We recently, last year, started to get money from FDOT on a grant called 5311. Not only did we provide trips in Henry County for the 1,500 people on TD, we were able to provide an additional 1,500 trips using funds from FDOT.
Not TD.
Not TD. Notice, add the two together, they made 3,000.
Let me ask you a question. When you, when you say trip, could that mean one person, 10 or 15?
One.
Could be more than one on the bus.
Could be more than one on the bus if we can do it. But when I say 3,000 trips, those are 3,000 people.
Okay.
Now, we don't have those funds right now. And it's for the last two years. Goodwheels has been in business for 29 years. We, I think we've probably over that time period given you very good service out here. In the last two years, our federal grants have been late. In 27, and let's go back to 2016, keep it real simple. We got our award, and we're talking about $600,000 in total awards from the federal government. We received our letters of approval in June of 2016. And in August of 2016, the money was in our bank. Okay, number two, 2017. Again, we received our award letter in June of 2017. We did not get permission to access that money until February 6th of 2018. I'd like you to, don't answer, but think about 15% of your budget that's over a year late. How well would you operate the county? Now, what's happening in this year, 2018? I just got the letter dated January 7th of 2019. And I explained to your manager, that doesn't mean I have access to the money today. The way the federal government works on this grant is even though they're for expenses that we incurred in 2018, we have got to give them invoices from 2019 to collect those funds. It's going to take us another logically 60 days to get the first reimbursement on that. It's only the last two years. That's why you're hearing all this concern. And that's why I've spoken with the county manager in Glades. He's trying to put a meeting together with FDOT. I've gone to Senator Pasadomo, I've gone to your other representatives, told them this exact problem. Goodwheels doesn't want to act this way. We go out of our way to take care of people and get them where they have to go. But I cannot pay anybody faster than the state of Florida pays me. And when the federal government is over a year late for the last two years, it, we can't do anything about it. Now, what we still do, I mean, basically, I mean, I look at what we do for you as if, just as is Lee Tran in Henry, in Lee County, I look at us as being the Hendry Tran up here. We provide you a fixed bus route that runs every day.
It does.
It does.
I thought it was TD only.
We had. I was able to, on your behalf, I was able to keep enough of the money from the last contract to make sure that we had the fuel bill running until we got this letter to start our funding again. to make sure that we had the clue bell running until we got this letter to start our funding again. I didn't want that to stop. We were able to keep it going. Okay, now, we're, if we didn't get the letter yesterday, we would have been out of money, and it would have stopped. So that's our problem. It's not, and I don't want to blame somebody else, but we're trying to deal with those two facts, but while still providing you a fixed route service, we're still providing you TD. And keep in mind that Sarasota County, Lee County, Collier County, and even your other members of the TPO, they only do TD. They don't do Medicaid. We do Medicaid. We are providing a lot of services for you. I hope we have this meeting that Glades is trying to put together so that you really can understand how vital what we do is. And I don't know of any other company, even for, certainly for profits, don't do it. So we're still, we're still providing Medicaid because they do contract with us separately. But even that takes time to get paid.
I don't know any company that's gonna let you be 60 or 180 days late on paying a fuel bill.
I do.
Well, you better talk to them.
In Lee County, they are. We've been in business for 29 years. I showed them the letters from the federal government, and they have carried us. I'm sorry.
We don't have the budget. We don't have that kind of money to do that.
To be clear, though, that's not.
Well, I don't have that kind of money to do it. I mean, fortunately, there's other fuel company in Lee County does.
It's a fuel company, just for clarification. It's not Lee County government. It's a private.
The company's carrying.
The fuel companies, yeah, they understand what service we provide. They understand we can't pay them any faster.
Get it from them. They won't, they won't sell you fuel to run here? What difference does it make?
No, you get, bring a vehicle all the way to Fort Myers to come all the way back here, doesn't make, no. We can, we can use our WEX cards here, not a problem. It's just gonna cost us more. It's just gonna result in some fewer trips. I, my only purpose for coming tonight was to say, I, I made a decision. This is the impact of that decision. And I also want you to understand, I hope you understand, the service that we're trying to provide and do provide to, what was it, almost 4,000, 3, 4,000 people every month are getting to dialysis or whatever they need. And it's not easy up here because most of your medical appointments are either in Fort Myers, Sarasota, West Palm Beach, or Miami. So we, we do provide that, and I, I hope that gives you an idea of why we're in the position we are right now. Mainly, and we weren't for 27 years prior to the last two. So it's mainly because we're getting our federal funds well after the year they're supposed to be received. And the TD Commission will pay us in 60 days. I could probably guarantee you payment in 60 days, but I can't guarantee you payment in 30.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
How much money do you get from District 1 DOT for Henry County specific?
Specifically, there's the 5311 grant, which this year is about $275,000. That's the 50% number. In other words, the grant is really worth twice that. And what we use is the TD money that we get as the match for that. So we're gonna, the net that we have to provide trips from FDOT is $275,000. And then we have a 5339 grant, which provides vehicles for Henry County out here. That's, grant pays 100% of the vehicles. We get that as a nonprofit. We also, Shirley Conroy is something else that comes to us because we are the CTC out here.
You get all of it? You get all the Shirley Conroy?
No, Shirley Conroy is, of course, the whole state of Florida.
So, but there's a certain amount for Henry.
It's up to the commission to decide how much they're gonna give. Same with the 5339. It basically gave us, in 2018, they gave us two vehicles. So you could probably say worth about $150,000.
All right, so roughly $275,000. But it got convoluted because you said it's 275 net value.
Net value. The grants double that, but you only get half of it.
The grants double that, 275,000.
Right. I have to come up with a 50% match.
You have to come up with a 50% match from who?
Well, what they allow me to, here in this county, they allow, FDOT allows me to use the funds we get from the TD Commission state. So we're using state funds to match federal funds. So as long as we use the TD money every month as the match. Now, in Lee County, it's different, but Lee County gives us, last year, they gave us $146,000 as a match for the 5310 operating grant. But out here, I can use TD money, state.
Did you, did you just miss state? That Lee County gets 5310, we're 5311, or?
No.
Is that a metropolitan number versus rural?
Yeah, Cape Coral UZA is Lee County. You're considered a rural county, Henry Glades out here. You get 5311. Lee County can't get 5311. They get 5310. You, you can get 5310 too.
Can, who's, who can? Henry County?
I can in Henry County. I applied for it this year.
Can Henry County get?
No.
Can the city of Cloiston or the city of LaBelle get 5310?
No. Goodwheels can. Now, the cities of.
Did you say Goodwheels can?
Can, yes. And this year, I applied for 5310, 5311, and 5339. Those were all submitted December 31st. In Lee County, Fort Myers gives us $30,000, and Cape Coral gives us $40,000 just to help with operations.
Mr. Mandell, obviously, you're, you're pretty solid with numbers. But Henry County gives 40?
45.
45?
Right.
Think about that from a standpoint, Cape Coral's 150,000 people. They give how much again?
The cities. I just gave you the cities.
I understand.
Okay.
But what's the number again?
The city of Fort Myers gave us $30,000.
Okay, city of Fort Myers is how many?
Clue, you want to compare that to Clueston, what LaBelle gives us? Zero.
So, hold on, though. How many humans are in Cloiston? 6,500?
All right, here's another number. Let me give it to you this way. TD, the amount of dollars we get to transport people in Lee County versus Henry County. It's $50,000 in Henry. It's 108,000 in Lee. You give us 45,000. Lee County gives us almost, it was 196,000. It's not two to one.
Lee County gives you 196,000 to move 100 and, no, no, excuse me, half a million people. Metropolitan area.
They're, they're giving us that money to do all the things we do in Lee County.
Plus, they have Lee Tran.
That's right. And Passport.
Yes.
Lee, Lee County, when I first got, the second year I was at Goodwheels, I worked out with Lee County. They put $321,000 into their budget as a line item. It's basically for four nonprofits.
Can Henry County, let me ask you, to, to remove Alan Mandell and Goodwheels from the equation. Can Henry County proper, can county administrator Jennifer Davis, do you know this, apply for the 5311 funds and potentially qualify for that $275,000?
Probably can, probably through the TPO.
Okay. I, I want to get educated on this.
Well, that's what we're trying to raise that meeting.
Sir?
That's why we want to have this meeting.
Yeah, but you're not gonna like my outcome. You're not gonna like my outcome at all.
You want to take it over?
Absolutely. I, I look at $275,000, and I look at what it costs to employ a human with a CDL and a van and/or two buses, two 40 packs, whatever it want to, want to be. Make sure they're handicapped, dealing with it. Even if we're in the red, still, our ability to have care, custody, and control over that program and not get gnawed on when I'm trying to eat dinner at Beefo Brady's because Goodwheels is sitting out in the Save-A-Lot parking lot with one or two vehicles on, air conditioners running, with no humans on the bus. That makes, I, I've been harping on it all night. I've been harping on, you know, I, I just hammered on a guy that asked for $12,900 to, to market Henry County to the Punta Gorda Airport, and they had a million and a half influx of people. And I don't see the return on investment.
Okay.
You're telling me, hold on, sir, you've been speaking all the time? I want to talk now. I'm, I'm done with this conversation. I am wore out. For 10 years, I've been traveling the streets of Henry County. Plus minus the other part that I've been traveling my entire life. Goodwheels has been a bone of contention for me from the day, two years prior to me running for my office. Because I look at those vehicles and I see one or two humans every time I see them. I wish the city of Cloiston would have had this conversation. I'm going way out on a tangent, by the way, right now. I wish the city of Cloiston would have had the same discussion with us whenever they were wanting to do their solid waste renegotiations. And I wish that we would have, I wish that I would have listened to Commissioner Swindle and, and bid out the contracts associated with our solid waste. But it's a new year. It's $275,000 from just 5311. That's just from District 1. Let me ask you one other question. How much money does District 4 or District 6 give you? Zero?
None.
None. I don't, okay, that's fine. That's all I needed.
Plus federal, it gets federal money as well.
Plus it gets federal.
No, you.
Plus it gets federal money. That's awarded on a time, certain basis, and we know that's anywhere from a year to 18 months prior to when the letter originates to, the actual arrival of those dollars and cents. And Mr. Mandell, I'm sure is doing an incredible job of floating his organization until those funds are able to come in. But guys, I go back to this. I'm, I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna say it every meeting, and I'm gonna be a stickler about this. Other people's money. I haven't been able to sleep because of a report that I've gotten about 176 transports plus 31 in the month of December at a hospital that I have no care, custody, and control over, other than I realize that we've put 70 cents of every dollar that goes to those firemen shutting down that road. And I'm not, I'm not trying to put people in harm's way, but I met with Mr. Alford today. And, and he very nicely ripped my tail. He came by my office twice while I was gone. He wanted to visit with me face to face. And he's no longer receiving a service that Goodwheels was providing because of budgetary cutbacks. Guess who that falls on? Doesn't fall on him. I don't know where he sleeps at night, but it ain't in Henry County. I sleep here every night. And I want us to fix our problems. And I think that we have, I think that if y'all disagree with me, let's have a great conversation about it. But if y'all see, this is completely anecdotal based. I'm not gonna challenge his numbers anymore because everybody gives me numbers that say everything is warm and fuzzy and glowing. But I disagree. I don't think there were 3,000 trips that happened last month. And just the TD Department and, and the Clue Bell Express and taking people that, you know, have one leg to be able to get to Palm Beach State College in Belgrade, I don't care. I don't care. I want this lady right here to find out what we have to do to, to start looking into the process of 275K coming directly to us. Then I want to lobby District 4 as it relates to finding, I don't know if it's Congressman Hastings, and who we need to talk to in that district office over there for DOT. Find out what we need to do to make sure that the students that need to go to Palm Beach State College, their needs are being met. The students that need to go to Edison, Florida Southwestern, their needs are being met. The kids that are going to ITech down in Namocley, their needs are being met. And then, God willing, in the creek don't rise, we're gonna have a facility that opens up in Glades County eventually one day, and we're gonna be able to get people there as well. But I'm, I gotta support my man, Commissioner Harris, because I think I heard you saying, I kind of heard you say you're done with the conversation as well, right? As it relates to Goodwheels. I know y'all been in business how many years, Mr. Mandell?
Goodwheels has been in business for 29.
29 years. And guess what? Just, just, it was another pet peeve of mine. That's the way we've always done it.
No.
And that's the way, I don't care anymore. I'm done. It's newly for me.
Well, you know, you made, you made a comment, you have every right. In Lee County, the county has first right of refusal to be the CTC.
Lee County has the first right of refusal?
Yeah, I'm sure you do as well.
Okay.
Okay, I, in case you didn't know that, I'm willing to tell you that.
We may lose our tail. We may lose our tail.
See, I'm not gonna say you will or you won't, but I will tell you this. Lee County, year after year after year, immediately says, no, thank you, and leaves it to us.
Yes, sir.
And you are welcome to try to run a transportation company.
And it may fall on deaf ears, and it may be a horrible idea after the numbers run themselves.
Well, and I hope that you will have somebody join Glades County in this meeting that we're going to have. We'll also have someone from the TPO there. We will have FDOT there. And it's really, the purpose of it is to really try to explain what we do and what the funding is.
Yes, sir.
And lay it all out, not just for me, but with FDOT sitting there who provides some of the funding, as well as the TPO, which really runs us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I do attend the meetings, and, and I believe when I called you, I've been calling them since November for people that was trying to be picked up, even people in a wheelchair. Their family called me, she have arthritis. She cannot get around, and they don't pick them up. So it's more people hurting than they're helping. I, I do understand you told me who you was taking and who you wasn't taking, but at the same time, the people are hurting, people that don't have transportation, people that don't have rides. You just said that you just got the letter for the check, where you told me in November that you had it, and you just didn't know when it would be released.
We, right.
But we do have a problem, and we have to find a way to fix it with or without goodwill because the people are hurting. So, you know, I, I have to come in with them that we need to find, that's an A plan that you have. We need to find a B and a C plan. We gotta find something else that's gonna work.
Commissioner, I absolutely had a letter in June, which we get every year, which tells us what the amount of money is we're gonna get. It wasn't, and I can send you all the email tomorrow. It wasn't until January 7th of this year that the 2018 money was finally released. And it's the LCB, which you're on, that tells us.
It wasn't until January of 2019?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Mandell, what I'm trying to say is, and with all due respect, sir, as a former mayor of the city of.
Yeah, Fort, no, Fort Myers Beach.
Fort Myers Beach. You understand, you've sat in this chair as well.
Of course I have.
But I'm wore out with it, Mr. Mandell.
I know, but you're just gonna take on the issue yourself.
You're exactly right, because I have confidence in this woman. That's why, that's why we hired her.
I feel sorry for her.
No, because let me tell you what, let me tell you what. You know, everybody wants to make light of it.
No.
But Henry County's gonna fix Henry County. Not Tallahassee, not DC, not District 1 in Bartow. You know, no, Henry County's gonna fix Henry County, or Henry County's gonna allow Henry County to die a slow, horrible death. And for me, while I'm in this chair, I'm gonna engage the heck out of the conversation. I'm gonna do everything in my power to listen to my constituency base, hear what they're preaching to me and what their frustrations and their consternations are, and I want to try to address those issues. And I'm passionate on all that.
To, to the point about people calling you and stopping you wherever they see you.
They ain't gonna call you. They got my cell number, and they're gonna call me.
They do call me. And I gave.
I don't have time to call you, sir. I have to deal with my constituents.
And they have my cell number too, because I gave it.
You're not gonna fix anything. Let me tell you why I know that. Because they've been dealing with this issue in the entire tenure of my, of my, of my commissionership.
With all due respect, sir, if we have 10 trips to give, let's say, because that's all the money we have, which is the problem we're in right now.
You know what you're saying, though? It's all the money we have. It's, 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 it's like so many other things in a bureaucratic system, sir. It's like so many other things. We can only do what we can only do. And guess what?
If you don't give us more money, if you don't give us more money, if the, if the OT doesn't give us more money, if the federal government doesn't give us more money, we have what we have. We have to live within what they give us. The state gives us $50,000.
Let me tell you something. Let me tell you something, with all due respect. You refuse to ever acknowledge the, the wasteful cost that I tell you about, that I see. And I don't make this up. I don't dream about it at night and go, man, I wonder what people are doing that are costing the taxpayers money. And I don't care if the taxpayer resides in, in California, or Tallahassee, or Cloiston. As it relates to my constituency base, that's the only ones I have care, custody, and control over, and I care about them.
We do care.
And I'm gonna grind it out for them.
When I was, tonight, tonight on the way here, I, I thought the meeting was in LaBelle. So I was sitting in the McDonald's there, and one of our buses went by. It probably had eight to 10 people on it.
Never seen that in my life.
And what time?
I promise I'm done this time.
All right, you don't, I will assure you, there are times during the day you're gonna see one person on a bus. If Medicaid tells us to take that person, and that's the only person who needs a trip, at that moment, the bus runs with one person. It's as simple as that. And when we take people leaving at 4:30, 5:30 in the morning from Henry County to go to Fort Myers, there are probably eight to 10 people on that bus, because we can set it up that way. It depends what time of day you're looking at it, and you can get whatever answers you want by looking at it that way. But when we have a limited amount of money, the LCB, which is part of your TPO, tells us who gets, it's part of your government system. They tell us who gets transported. It's dialysis first. So if we've taken 10 people to dialysis, and you have another person who has to go to an eye doctor, no matter how serious it is, they don't go. That's how it's rationed. It's not Goodwill. Our people sit there and have to listen to your people call up and be upset, sometimes abusive, as, as you may get also. But if you're given X number of dollars, you can only provide X number of trips. We don't have. We don't have.
Can I, can I, can I help out?
If you will.
You came with a specific question, will we reconsider the fuel?
Yes, I get, take it, the answer is no, it's up to you.
We need to wrap this up, we can argue about it all night long, but we're to the point that the answer is no.
You know what, the answer is no, we'll deal with WEX. The only thing I would ask you to do is please send someone, support this meeting that Glades County wants. Learn what you're trying to get into before you get into it. And if you do go into it, I will actually try to help you, frankly. I don't, you know, we can survive as a company with just Lee County and Collier. I would love to continue working up here with you, but if you all make the decision you want to do it on your own, you have my word, I will work with you in a positive way to try to make it happen for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mandel. Thank you, Chair, thank you. Moving forward, is anyone else in the public would like to address the board tonight? Go ahead, Dr., come on.
Just two seconds.
Two seconds, your time's up.
Real quick, Joe Pepe again for the Health Department. We've asked that transportation be included in our community health assessment, we're going through that right now with our strategic planning process. I agree with all of your comments, I think that there's some opportunities. One of the things we've done in our clinic is a point-to-point voucher service with Uber and taxi services, and that's working great, the cost is exact expenses for whatever the transportation is. It almost guarantees the person shows to their appointment, because we're doing a point-to-point, and they're making the appointment, we're reimbursing them. So, there are other options, there are other solutions. I have a director in Charlotte County, because I'm overseeing them right now, used to be the former Sarasota Transportation Director, I'll be reaching out to her to see if she's willing to provide any insight and input, because she was part of that route planning as well. So, anything I could do to help, let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Pepe.
And just as a matter of record, real quick, I have met with the TPO on several occasions as of late, and I have quite a bit of information on your options going forward, but I'll formalize them in a report and get that out to you, and we can talk about it at a future board meeting if you would like. But we have contributed to Goodwheels, just the same as we always have, just for clarification for everyone's sake, for the entire year through September 30th, the, the total of $45,000. So, all you did tonight was just not agree to, to have the fuel agreement. So, we're contributing at the same level that we always have.
Are they cut off?
No, they want to pay the bill?
No, no, they're cut off.
At, it's ju, January 12.
We cut them off, didn't we?
Well, it, there was 30 days from the date of the notice letter and the.
Oh, as of January 12?
I think it's 12.
You're removing their rings, or what?
It will be as of the 12.
Yeah, you can, you can kill the ring, yeah.
January is the 12.
Well, the thing is, and you, you know, I really was, the conversation was way too long, we've had, I've had calls where they have not been able to get rides.